Welcome to the Planning Board meeting for October 8th, 2024. We have four members here tonight. Member McCallum, member Conley, member Kent, and myself, member Crowa. We'll be voting on the applications this evening. The meeting is being streamed online. Beld is recording it, so anything that anybody says should be done at the podium and give your name and address. Now, as we normally do, we'll start off with our old new business and then jump into our public hearings at 7:15 or after, depending on how long the old new business takes. All right. So the first item on our agenda for the old new business is request for as-built approval. Director Santucci Rossi, did we have anything come in on 2335 Commercial Street?
Uh, we did, Madam Chair. I just haven't had a chance to put together the as-built certificate, but we do have all the materials in hand to date.
Okay. Then, we do have materials. A staff report on 116 Lundquist Drive. Assistant Director Murphy, can you give us an update on that, please?
Yes, Madam Chair. The applicant requested the planning board grant as-built approval and release all charity tied to the project. Back in January 2024, the board voted to approve the special permit for use, which was factory outlet, in addition to development within the Watership Protection Overlay District. The applicant has satisfied all conditions. They've built the site out completely. Under staff's direction, we asked the applicant to swap out some of the landscaping that was there due to it not surviving the summer. The applicant has satisfied that request, and we are recommending the conditions noted in the report to be surviving conditions with the as-built certificate.
Okay. Thank you. See if any members have any questions. Member McCallum?
No questions.
Member Kent?
No questions.
Member Conley?
No, thank you.
All right, and none on my end? And so with that, just be looking for a motion to grant as-built approval with the conditions in the staff report.
So move.
Motion by member Kent. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by member Conley. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. And actually, before I forget, somebody brought to my attention, there is a blue Ford in the parking lot that is idling without anybody in it. The license plate is 2B, I can't read my own brand handwriting. I think it's S, as in Sam, Z55. So if that sounds like your license plate and you have a blue Ford, you might want to go check it out. So, all right. Next thing is 350 Granite Street. Do we have any update on that?
I don't think it's available next month, Madam Chair.
Okay. Thank you. All right. And then, we had news from the state. Director Santucci Rossi, could you give us an update on the MBTA zoning?
I'd love to, Madam Chair. For those of you who are not aware, we received the approval from the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities on our 3A MBTA zoning overlays. So those are all, when the town approved them, they were part of our ordinances. But now, this is just another level of reassurance for us locally that what we put forward and submitted on behalf of the community is acceptable and is in compliance with the regulations. So, very exciting.
All right, great. And thank you for all the hard work out of your office with that. Any members have any questions on the approval? Member McCallum?
No, no questions.
Number Kent?
No question.
Number Conley?
On the MBTA communities, I wanted to commend our staff. I know that you were part of a smaller group statewide that had everything in, on time, and ready to go. So thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Okay. All right. The next item on our agenda is the approval of meeting minutes for August 13th. I know member Conley wasn't able to make it to that meeting. She has submitted the Mullen Rule for applications that are before us tonight, which is certification that she watched and watched, looked at all the materials. But for purposes of voting on the minutes, we'll have a member Kent, McCallum, and myself. Does anyone have any questions with the minutes?
No, I've read them. They're fine.
Okay. We'll have a motion to approve the minutes for August 13th.
So move.
Motion by member Kent?
Second.
Second by member McCallum. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay. All right. And we moved through that fairly quickly. So at 7:08, we'll take a short break until we start up with the public hearings at 7:15. All right, everyone. Welcome again to the Braintree Planning Board meeting. It's now 7:15, so we can begin our public hearings. Unlike the old new business, these are public hearings, meaning that there is an opportunity for public comment. We are going to start off with our continued hearing on Town Council order, the mixed-use planning development district. This is a continued hearing. We did have extensive public comment in August. We had an extensive presentation from the developer and the team, the applicant team, and Simon. I do want to try to move through the agenda to some of the other items that we have. There has been a lot of written comments submitted to the board. We have read everything that has been submitted and understand it. I would, it's 7:15 now. I would like to try by 8:15 to get to the board deliberation piece of it, if not before. So I just ask, if you have submitted written comments, or you spoke in August, there were over 20 people who spoke in August. The reason we continued was for the fiscal impact peer review. I ask that if you come up to speak, that you speak about things that have newly happened or anything new that didn't get a chance to be addressed in August. I'm just asking people not to be repetitive and to allow people who haven't had a chance to interact to do that. And on that same vein, I'm going to ask the applicant to keep their portion down to five or 10 minutes so we can move on to the peer reviewer and move on to questions from the public and the board, and then try to move through the rest of the agenda that we have this evening. So, with respect to the public comment, when you come up to the microphone, make sure to give your name and address for the record. There are minutes being taken, and it's a lot easier if you can say those things clearly. Going to ask everybody to be courteous, and I know there's strong opinions on both sides, but not going to tolerate any booing, as we've done at the prior meetings. So, feel free to give your comments, particularly those that are new that haven't been raised before, but just please be respectful, as I know our Braintree community is. So, I'll just also note, I know the applicant's going to go first, but this is a hearing on a recommendation by the planning board. The recommendation goes to Town Council. Town Council is who ultimately votes on this and other zoning changes. So our recommendation tonight is only that. And under the PUD, it comes back with a special permit. We'll talk about that more as we go forward. But I do just want to remind people that that's what's in front of us this evening. So with that, I will turn it over to the applicant.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Frank Marinelli, for the record, I'm a lifelong resident of Braintree and land use attorney with my business located in Braintree for over 38 years. With me is Jim Dunlop, the managing director of ZOM, as well as Mark Fugier, our fiscal analyst. And also here is Susan Ellsbury and Lawrence Scribby of Benchmark. I'm pleased to represent ZOM Living, who has developed nearly 30,000 quality apartments nationwide, approximately $5 billion in development. And as the board notes, we're proposing to build a needed 325 residences on an unused back parking lot at South Shore Plaza. So the project would be a much-needed $140 million transformation and investment in Braintree. As the chair pointed out, on August 13th, we had a comprehensive presentation by our team on every issue. And at that time, the board voted to have an independent expert evaluate ZOM's economic report. Carl Seidman was chosen by the town and will give his report, which was posted to the Planning Board's website last week. A summary on page one states that "on review of the fiscal analysis provided by the applicant, the applicant's fiscal analysis, quote, 'provides a sound and reasonable assessment of the proposed project's direct impact on town revenues and expenses.' The conclusion that the project will provide a substantial net fiscal impact is sound,' end quote." The fiscal analysis also provides, as you know, that the preconstruction building permit fees and the utility connection fees are about $2.3 million to Braintree, and then approximately $558,000 per year in taxes. Every year thereafter, substantial net positive revenue. This is critical where Braintree's financial regression, particularly over the past four years, is undeniable, with incoming administration inheriting an $18 million deficit, which had to be partially addressed by a resident override vote of $8 million in June, which still left an approximate $10 million deficit. And Braintree Electric spoke about the challenges with business and the industrial sector in Braintree in their letter of support, talking about how 25% of sales have been lost over the years and that those businesses are not being replaced in Braintree. Not a very good prognostication. Over two years ago, the town auditor spoke about the unsustainable path that the town was on in terms of $170 million in expenses every year, and no new growth, no new development, no new sources of revenue. So that's what we have here tonight with $140 million investment, high-end housing, and economic development. Housing and economic development is called for in the Master Plan Statute, Chapter 41, Section 81D. We meet the requirements of the statute. The Planning Board, Planning Director's staff report talks very, in much detail, about the purposes of PUD zoning, and it talks about the compliance of this development with PUD purposes. So this development and proposal is, it squares and it complies with every part of the Master Planning Statute, the master plan's core themes, and the purposes of planned unit development under Section 612 of our zoning ordinances. We have, over the course of the past few months, we have reached out to the community. We've developed a comprehensive website, theresidences@southshore.com. And we have held nine community meetings at various times and locations, including two at the American Legion, two at the Farmers Market, another at Highlands Playground, another at Watson Park, to ensure maximum resident participation. Over 30 letters of support have been submitted to the board. And those letters are really the most emails and letters of support to the Planning Board and Town Council, more than any other zoning proposal in recent years. People recognize throughout the town the need for this development. On August 13th, Clay Hillman, Research Director of Simon Properties, gave an extensive presentation to the board and the public about the importance of residential at retail centers. And along with the Development Director, Simon gave examples of how the addition of housing was the catalyst for further improvement and investment at large retail. And we've seen it everywhere around us, but not yet in Braintree, with Legacy Place, with University Avenue, with Hanover Crossing. Hanover Crossing has 543,000 square feet of retail and 300 units. We have a 1.6 million square foot asset in Braintree, in the South Shore Plaza, which has been here for 63 years, three times the size of Hanover Crossing. But we're not asking for three times the residential units. We're right in the same spot of 325, they have 300, we're three times as large at the South Shore Plaza. Simon is a global real estate leader. They're a number-one taxpayer. The third, fourth, and fifth largest taxpayers to this town is reported in the Patriot Ledger on June 24th. Our apartment complexes developed within the last 20 years in town. They make net revenue for the town. The letters of support that have been submitted, for example, Emily Levitt, I'm a resident of Granite Park. I have a daughter at Flaherty Elementary School. I'm writing to you today to express support for changes in the zoning code necessary to allow ZOM Living to develop the residents at South Shore. We're currently in the midst of a housing crisis that has led to an affordability crisis for the middle class. There are many loud voices in Braintree that protest any change. However, they are always the same loud voices. I'm writing to you today to let you know that there are also residents of Braintree that are looking to the future and that are ready to embrace change for our community's benefit. Also, Avianna Brown of Walnut Street, who says, "We need housing diversity. We need housing choices for young professionals and older residents." That's exactly who this development serves. And we want high-quality multifamily living. "We need new growth and revenue to maintain teacher and staffing levels in schools. We need to support our town's largest commercial taxpayer, the South Shore Plaza. It's not a dead mall, but rather one that welcomes tens of thousands of patrons, on average, every day, has national tenants, and is highly profitable. We need to stop the obstruction, or we risk a steeper decline that we are in currently," end quote. And then we have the Braintree Chamber of Commerce, who submitted a letter and...
Sorry, I don't mean to interrupt you, but we have read the letters. If there's another point to wrap up, just so we can keep moving forward. I would appreciate it.
So as set forth in the Planning Board's, in the Planning Director's report, we have met all of the purposes of the PUD zone. And by the way, PUD zoning is a superior zoning mechanism. It is not wholesale rezoning, where you can't go back to the underlying zoning. PUD zoning, number one, is tied to a concept plan. The concept plan shows things like a 13-foot-high berm with high vegetation. All of that will be included when we come back to the Planning Board for a special permit process. The process is a recommendation... back to the planning board for a special permit process. The process is a recommendation to the town council, which respectfully, we feel we've earned. And then the town council acts on enactment of the PUD, and then it comes back to the planning board for further peer reviews, for mitigation, for community benefits, whatever the details of the special permit development are. But PUD is tied to a concept plan, and secondly, as provided in the PUD ordinance, if a special permit is not granted for the development, the underlying zoning continues to apply. So the unworkable zoning that we're trying to create an overlay would continue to apply. Evaluating the proposal on the merits and conclusion of the PUD, as outlined in the planning director's favorable recommendation, the residents at South Shore clearly comply, and we respectfully request the board's issuance of a favorable recommendation to the town council, and to move Braintree forward, not backwards, but to move forward as direly needed with the high-end apartments and $140 million of economic development that is represented by the residences at South Shore. Thank you.
Thank you. And Director Santu Girazi, I know we received our peer review back on the fiscal impact, and the peer reviewer is here this evening. Would you mind introducing him for everyone?
Madam Chair, so we have Kyle Seidman, who is our fiscal peer consultant. And just a little bit about the process that was undertaken, and I want to thank Connor for sort of kicking this off in my absence over the past couple, past couple months. But there was an opportunity for a site visit, in which several of the town departments attended, as well as the applicant. And then there was quite a bit of interviews that were set up with assessing, with fire chief, police chief, DPW, various disciplines in the community in coordination, and then also some questions that came from Kyle that were vetted to the various departments, and, you know, that information was provided as well while he was doing his due diligence and analysis. So he is here this evening. Mr. Seidman, if you wouldn't mind reviewing your report, and then we can take it from there, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Melissa. Thank you, Madam Chair. As Melissa said, I was hired by the town to do a peer review of the fiscal impact report that was submitted by Fugier Planning and Development on behalf of the applicant. And as has already been stated, I mean, overall, I think the fiscal impact analysis report was well-done. It's sound. I think the conclusion that the project will have a positive net fiscal impact for the town, you know, is accurate. I would put, the report came up with a point estimate for that of $556,000. I would be a little more cautious in putting in a range of $400,000 to $600,000, depending on, you know, where the ultimate assessed value of the property will be, as sort of the biggest issue. So, you know, the estimate that the report had was annual tax revenues of $1,078,000. They estimated this based on the assessed value of one comparable project in Quincy. So to sort of test that estimate, I looked at two other residential properties that, in the market analysis report, had similar rent levels, to see what their assessed values were. I also did my own estimate of the net income of the property, because successors will often assign an assessed value based on the net income of the property. So based on the projected rents and some other data that the applicant shared with me, I came up with my own estimate of what the valuation might be based on the net operating income. So, you know, those figures came in with a variation of valuation that might be between $325,000 to $350,000 per unit. So that could result in tax revenue a little less, or a little higher than the report, but you're definitely going to be in a range of about $110,000 to $190 million of gross tax revenue from the property tax and the Community Preservation Act addition. The other, there's also an offset to that, because you will lose properties being transferred and will be redeveloped. So the taxes that are now collected on that site, you will no longer receive. So that estimate was done very accurately. They looked at the differential assessment for the undeveloped land, for the parking lot, for the residential properties there. So that offset of about another $104,000 looks to be very accurate. The next revenue source was motor vehicle excise taxes. Here, they estimated revenue of a little more than $89,000 a year. This estimate may be a little conservative. On the one hand, they used a $10,000 valuation per vehicle, so a little higher than the average for the town. But it's reasonable that the values, the values will be higher at this project. It's a new project, bringing in new residents. Their cars may not be as old. It's likely to be more turnover of residents, so less cars that might be 10 or 12 years old at the property. So the $10,000 car valuations, I think, is certainly reasonable. The assumption of 1.1 vehicle per household seems to be on the low end. You know, there will be one-bedroom units that may have, you know, a couple or two residents with two cars. So I think somewhere in the order of 1.5 cars per unit might be more realistic. So the motor vehicle revenue might come a little higher than what was projected. I'm estimating it somewhere between $99,000 and $121,000. And then there's a small increment you'll probably get in meal tax, from the local option meal tax, and I estimated that as a little less than $6,000. So in terms of overall revenues, I put the range of between $1,000, $1,200,000, and $1,113,000 is what the likely range of new revenues will be. On the cost side, you know, the fiscal impact analysis report focused on the three main cost impacts, police, fire, and schools. And, you know, their estimates were based on conversations from, you know, with each of those departments. And they looked at a lot of data from comparable apartment complexes to look at what the likely number of fire calls, police calls, and school-aged children would be. And generally, you know, that data is very good. You know, based on the discussions with the police department, they estimated the impact that would require one additional police officer. That was sort of validated in my conversations with the police department. The one caveat they have is that, you know, it really will depend on who resides in the unit, and there is a lot of variation. So you might get, you know, a larger impact on calls than was estimated, depending on the ultimate tendency of the project. I thought the estimate of a police officer's salary might be a little bit on the high side, based on data I got from the department, but that's a small differential. They estimated fire costs of about $84,000 based on 56 new calls per year. Once again, that was based on a lot of data from comparable apartment complexes. The fire chief thought it might be on the high side, and might be half of that. So once again, it's a fairly conservative effort, estimate. The school costs, you know, were estimated at $370,000, you know, some direct impact on school costs, and then special education costs, and then an offset for increased school aid. Those figures are sort of based on an estimate of 28 new schoolchildren, school-aged children at the project. That's drawn, once again, from comparable residential projects, and they did differentiate the impact between market rate and affordable units. So I think that 28 schoolchildren estimate is fairly sound. The one concern I have is that this won't be the only residential development in Braintree over the next several years. You know, there's currently a pipeline of six projects, two of which were permitted, two proposed, one in litigation. Now, if all of those were to be built, they'd add another 333 units. So the number, the combined school-aged children impact, you know, could be twice, maybe even a little more, somewhere in the range of 60 students. So that might have a greater impact on the schools. I did speak to Superintendent Lee about this, and, you know, he once again cautioned that the actual grade levels of the students will have a big impact. If they cluster very much in particular grades, then they'll have a greater impact. But he felt that the combined impact could require three to four new students, new teachers, I'm sorry, you know, to address that. And based on figures for the cost of a new teacher and fringe benefits, you know, that that cost would be $436,000. I allocated a little less than half of that to the ZOM development, because they're only providing a portion of the schools' schoolchildren. So my estimate was $279,000 as the fiscal impact on schools, which was actually slightly less than the fiscal impact report. And the school aid figures for the current year are slightly less than what we're in the back report, but that's really trivial. It's non-material. It only makes a difference of about $2,000. So lastly, there might be some other costs based on increased use of libraries or elder fare services or other town services. You know, it's hard to estimate that, but the report does make an allowance for that of $125 per unit. So that seems very reasonable. So in terms of the overall fiscal impacts, you know, I think the report does a good job. Just with uncertainty about the assessed value of the final development, the range, you know, might be a little different than the final figure. Let's also note, you know, there are non-fiscal impacts, positive impacts from the project that will add new affordable housing units and new housing options in the town, and also additional open space and trails for the public to use. You know, there could be benefits, longer-term benefits, because by introducing a new residential development adjacent to the shopping plaza, you know, if the economics of the shopping plaza change at some point in time, and you're, the town and the property owner are looking to future redevelopment, having a residential unit nearby, you know, creates some momentum and perhaps opportunities for, you know, additional residential or new mixed-use development at the site. One potential cost impact would be, there might be some added costs to sewer overflows, which do sometimes happen occasionally in heavy rain events. You are adding more residential units with more sewer discharge. So that might increase the number of events occasionally, you know, but it's hard to quantify that. And then I'd just say the biggest issue and uncertainty around the fiscal impacts is going to be what the ultimate assessed value of the property is. If, you know, if the property performs as projected or better than projected, I think you're in very good shape. If something fundamentally changes in the market, and the property doesn't achieve, you know, the projected rents or protected occupancy, you may end up with a lower assessed valuation and a slightly lower, you know, fiscal impact. It's also possible that the interest rate environment will change if there's another, you know, increase in inflation and interest rates go up, and the sort of cap rates used to value the property go up, you know, that might also increase, decrease the assessed valuation. So that's sort of a summary of my analysis, and happy to answer any questions from the board.
Great. Thank you very much. While we have our peer reviewer up here, Member Conley, do you have any questions?
No questions.
Member Con.
So just to reiterate it, I think the original estimate by the applicant was about 500 and something thousand positive annually net. And are you in that ballpark then?
Yes, yes.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Conley?
No questions. Thank you.
No questions either. Thank you so much for the thorough report. Appreciate it.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. All right. So with that, we'll move on to public comment at this point. Just again, when you come up, state your name and address for the record before you speak. And just to reiterate, try not to be repetitive, or with somebody that, something that somebody said before you this evening or at a prior meeting.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Adam Director. Kelly Moore, 46, Holosav. Well, they're back. After being rejected last year, the Monster Project is back and 30% bigger than their last iteration. If it was rejected last year, I say we reject it again. But wait, the jig is up. It's quite obvious that this whole thing smells like a back-room deal. You've got the mayor, town council, ZOM's attorney, pop-up civic association, all aligned to jam this through, no matter what the residents feel. This is a giant middle finger to the residents of Braintree. The proponents of the ZOM project act as though like it's a GoFundMe for the plaza. This is the largest apartment building ever proposed in Braintree, overshadowing a neighborhood, which I don't actually see on your map. If it can happen in our neighborhood, it can happen anywhere in Braintree. Do not fall for the "we need more revenue" bandwagon. Sure, we absolutely do, but I ask you at what cost? The NBCA is not an anti-development organization, as our opponents like to say. We are anti-poor development, which we believe this is. And most of all, we are pro-neighborhood. This development will create 2,000 additional vehicle trips per day throughout Braintree. Is that something we really want or need? This development will introduce more students to our schools, probably a lot more than they estimate. The plaza is now the highest crime destination in Braintree. The next five apartment complexes. There is no doubt that the ZOM project will become the same, and that's the nature of the beast, crime upon crime, right in our neighborhood. It's not our job to save the South Shore Plaza. It's the job to be a good neighbor, which is very difficult to do since they rarely act in good faith. The South Shore Plaza has to save the South Shore Plaza. Simon Properties is the largest mall owner in the country. They're making billions of dollars a year. If they don't know how to save the plaza, who are we to think we can? Actually, I don't know how many people go to the plaza anymore. I don't know many who do. Simon Properties has done nothing to make this an attractive destination. As a matter of fact, they've chosen not to invest in the plaza, although they've invested significantly in the Burlington Mall. Why would that be? We can do better than this. I ask you to listen to reason, listen to the people, and reject this project. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Madam Chair, honorable members. My name is Stephen Lyden. I'm a 53-year resident of Braintree. You know, before I come tonight, I played on B-CAM, and I played the last August 13th meeting, in which I spoke at that meeting. But everyone that spoke in that meeting against the ZOM project, every one of them says, "We're not against development, just not in my backyard," which is nimbly. Every one of them. Play it, play it back. Everyone go play it back. "We're not against development, just not in our backyard." Oh, I'm sorry, I'm in East Braintree. I got electric light companies being built now with 48. Braintree needs it. I mean, he's saying they speak for Braintree. They don't speak for Braintree. They speak for their little neighborhood there. I have friends all over Braintree, and I got in contact with all of them. They're all for the project. We do not want any more overdrive. We got $10 million short this year. I don't know if you've seen the $14.9 million we got to give to Mr. Wetrow-- I don't know if you've seen the 14.9 million we got to give to Mr. Wetrow. Whether insurance covers that or not, we'll see. We have no money. We got us out doing it. And then here they are talking about inside jobbing this. Well, let me give you a civic question. Elections have consequences. You lost. I mean, and it's not that, you know, they fought it, they fought it, they fought it, just, and they're only-
You can just direct the comments up here.
Yeah, I will. But the only reason they have for not building this, not in my backyard. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our short folks have a problem. I'm Susan O'Leary and I live right behind-
Yeah, you should be able to bend it.
No, I'll go down here. Yeah, of course, I'm fine. Thank you anyhow. I'm Susan O'Leary. I live at 500 Verso, right near the Flaherty School. I think most of you recognize me because I usually speak at these meetings. I am not against change in Braintree. Heaven knows when we moved in 75 years ago, that was a change to the citizens of Braintree. I'm not against change, but what I want is responsible change. And that's really, hopefully, the message I have conveyed every time I have spoken. That's in my way. What it is with Simon, and you've heard me say this before, is they want to come in to our neighborhood and ask us to change while they make the money off of it. And that's not right. I know that Braintree has a revenue problem and we need to raise revenue, but we have to do it in a more fiscally responsible way. What Simon has done each and every time, last year, the year before, the year before, the year before, it's almost like same old, same old. Let's pretend to present a new project that only benefits them or mainly benefits them or mostly benefits them, and we're not supposed to figure out what they're doing. They're basically trying us to change our zoning laws so that they can do whatever they want. And that's actually offensive to somebody who's lived here for over 70 years. It's about time that Simon realized they have been a good neighbor to us, but we have been a phenomenal neighborhood for them. And to have this magnitude project built into that neighborhood is not healthy and it's not safe. It's going to draw on our resources and give very little back. Thank you for your time.
I live on Sterling Street. And maybe this has been addressed, I'm not particularly for or against the project, but I was wondering where are the children going to play? I was looking at this and I didn't see any sort of place for playing. How many people here have backyards? Raise your hand if you have a backyard. Okay, most people do, you know, and-
Sir, if you can just direct the comments up here, please.
Sure.
Thank you.
So, maybe you have an answer?
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
We have 39.7% open space, and that is 56% more than the 25% required in the highway business zone. 39% open space. We're two hun, we're two football fields away from the closest single-family home. We're not in a neighborhood, we're on South Shore Plaza property. Thank you.
Okay, does that include the parking lot?
All right, I am, I don't want this back and forth.
Parking lot's not open space.
Okay.
That's all green space.
Attorney Maranelli?
Yeah.
I'm going to give him an opportunity to speak and then if there's anything that we need to clarify-
No, no, that was my concern. I do see the open space there. I don't know if that's really a play area for kids, but yeah, that was my concern. Thank you.
Dear member of planning board, I'm writing this strongly opposite the proposed ZOM apartment development at the residence at South Shore, which includes two existing single-family homes on Lakeside Drive. While I recognize the necessity for housing in our community, this project raised significant concerns regarding to its size and proximity to resident areas and Flaherty Elementary School. Firstly, the scale of this development is incompatible with our residential neighborhoods and contradicted to the approved master plan for our community. The close proximity to single-family homes pose serious concern about privacy, noise, and overall quality of life. The presence of such a large structure will drastically alter the environment that family has invest in, potentially lower property values and disturbing the peace of our neighborhoods. Moreover, the developers, developments location near Flaherty Elementary School presents a safety risk for our children. The introduction of large apartment complexes could increase traffic congestion and hazardous during school hours. The potential for high, heightened foot, high-foot touch and vehicle traffic pass risk to our child's as they travel to and from school. As first-generation immigrants, my husband and I moved our family from New York 22 years ago. We built our home from ground up so that we can have a safe place and enjoy environment to raise our four kids, paying our college tuitions for three kids and Y1 in Braintree High School, and having a family, a house for our parents to enjoy their retirement. This is what American dream's about. We put all our savings for our kids' college, our parents' retirement, our retirement, and this house on Lakeside Drive is our environment, and we put every hard-earned penny to hope that we could retire after the kids move out with this large development. I met with the ZOM's living team and request that either relocate the development away from our neighborhood or downscale it to ensure compatibility with the existing communities. Unfortunately, they declined to make any changes in terms of size and the location, size of project profitability as the reasons. With my experience in helping local nonprofit to promote voting registration for the upcoming registration, I believe in our elected office responsibility to protect the interests of residents. I urge you to thoroughly review ZOM's living's MUPUD application to ensure that our community's interest, privacy, and safety are priorities, prioritize it. I also have a couple concerns. I have sent, give handout to all the planning board. I highlighted all the particular section of the bylaw that ZOMs want to exclude from this MUPUD. I have concerns. I once get a quote from Jack Ma, says, "Smart person know what they want. Wise person, they tell you what they don't want." So, if you're looking at ZOM's application, I learned a lot. They are really wise. They are definitely a wise person. They tell us in the law that what they don't want. So, example, I don't, example, if you're looking at the first one they don't want is 135 dash, I believe is 135 dash, let's see, 135 dash 64. It's talking about advertising, that's excluding any advertising except temporary real estate signs. Those are the rule that our resident taxpayer was bound us by, but ZOM has exclude themselves for it. A lot, one and another example regarding to parking. It indicate that the parking will not allow to, so is 135 dash 603. The outdoor storage for the unregistered motor vehicle not define as junk with a validate inspection sticker for period not exceed 90 days within one calendar year. So, this is what example of what our taxpayer has to bound by. We are not allowed to park a unregistered car in our parking lot, and ZOMs asking to throw that out the window. I agree there's a lot of rule that do not apply in this section of our bylaw. However, I do not agree that we completely throw out every, every part of the bylaw. Some of the bylaw, I agree, that only applies to single-family. However, if you're looking at example of 135 dash 603, another one is storage of the following item registered to address of the sign on which is store, one camper, one recreation vehicle, one registered boat on a trailer. So, those example, we pay tax. We not allow or we allow to do so, but ZOM had asking us throw that away. That do not apply to us. We pay the same resident tax as their residents. Why aren't those not applying? Why aren't those excluded at all? And another one we're talking about is wetland exclusions. ZOM had asked us to exclude all the bylaw regarding to wetland in what part of this Curtis zoning. Another one is talking about any commercial need to be 100 feet away from residents, closest residents and red land and protected, protected lands. Why are they asking to be excluded? We pay tax. We have to go by the zone, same zoning law. They're going to pay resident tax. Why are they not go by those law? So, overall, I'm ask you to object, reject this proposal because what they're asking is not clear enough. I understand Ms. Melissa Santucci say this is a zoning change, and I do ask all the planning board member redo all the zoning change. Does all those apply only for single-family? Why not apply to residents that who pay the same tax as we are? Thank you.
Hi, I'm Sarah Forster, 65 Harrison Avenue here in Braintree. I'm here to support the ZOM project. Why? Because Braintree needs this. Braintree is the entrance to the South Shore. We have two highways, the red line, the commuter rail. We are a half an hour from Boston and an hour away from the Cape, depending on traffic. If you go in one direction, you're at the ocean. If you go to the other direction, you're at the Blue Hills. Braintree should be a destination. Instead, we're a pass-through. People come here to go to the mall or maybe Hobby Lobby, but I'm sure no one in a very long time has ever said, "Let's go to, let's go to brunch in Braintree and do some window shopping." For too long, this town is focused on what we were and not what we need to be. The ZOM project is not just a development, but it's a catalyst to open the doors to a brighter future. Should our developments be thoughtful and with intent? 100%. Should we be mindful of our neighborhoods? Of course. But should we also look to build up areas where commercial, retail, and housing can be nestled together to create its own neighborhood? Bringing in tax revenue is the only way for this town to survive. Bringing in developments is the only way to do this. And trust me, if you build it, they will come. At the Wood Road revitalization meeting a few months back, I asked a crucial question. Why hasn't this area been developed to its full potential? And the answer was disheartening. Our restrictive and outdated zoning laws. These rules have turned Braintree into a dead zone on the map, discouraging developers. And it's time to erase that line and show that Braintree is open for business. Now, the arguments against this project have been long and varied. There it has been, there's going to be too much traffic. Nobody's going to rent at this price, price point. There's going to be section, it'll turn into Section 8 housing. Our schools will be flooded. And one of my favorites was people will rent and then sublease to a family of 10. And of course, there's the usual, "I wouldn't live there. Why would anybody else?" Or my favorite and a standard, "It will destroy the fabric of our town. Our small-town values will be destroyed." But I have to call out the hypocrisy. I love the town groups on Facebook. I think a lot of people do. But somebody recently posted a question asking for fundamental ideas on how to increase revenue for this town. The answers, there were 137 comments. Wegmans, Market Basket, sports complexes, Amazon distribution centers, family fund centers, medical centers, but no housing, unless, of course, it's veterans and seniors. The hypocrisy is real. I do understand the concerns about losing our small-town values, but I believe that we can maintain our community spirit while embracing growth and change. And of course, where has no gotten us? We're also here tonight to discuss a lithium battery storage facility on a plot of land that should have been used for luxury rentals or something else, but the neighborhood said no. And instead, we're probably going to end up with an ugly building, because I work in data centers and usually they're not the most attractive buildings. But they won't impact the schools, so I guess it's going to be okay. Now, while we are not the epitome of a small town, we are not the town that everybody says that we are. It's time to embrace change. We can and will be a town to be proud of, a city where people say, "Oh, you live in Braintree." So, I implore the planning committee, tune out the noise. You can't win this. No one is going to be happy. But make the tough choice and vote to approve the ZOM project. Take a step towards the future. And then go back to the drawing board on our zoning laws and make fundamental and critical changes to help bring development. Bring the future to Braintree. Be part of the solution and not part of the problem. Thank you.
Good evening, Board. Bart Melchiorne, 64 Howie Road. I strongly oppose the Monster. My wife and I moved to Braintree in 1991 for the high academic school system. Soon after we settled in, we noticed the neighborhood, especially Howie Road, was a speedway back then due to the traffic coming from the back entry of the mall. I fear for the safety of my grandchildren visiting me and all the kids' safety in the neighborhood that the streets will become another speedway. What are we doing here, Simon and Ron? While you're offering the town of Braintree mere pocket change, you're stuffing your pockets with lots of dollars. This project, Monster project, will stop generations of people who want to call Braintree their home. I hear rumors swirling in the town that the project is a done deal. The fact of the matter is, they are only rumors. Do the right thing for the people of Braintree or create a Monster. Save Laurie's Way. Thank you for your time. Thank you for your time.
I didn't want to do that. I'm sorry. It's just so, can I, can I take it out? Because I'm just taller than this. Is that okay?
Yeah, whatever your mind.
Okay. Jennifer Wadlands, 37 Parkside Circle. Upon reviewing the planning file, so I hear you on talking about relevant information, I have some thoughts to share. So multifamily housing can indeed serve as a transition between commercial and residential areas when done at the right scale and with thoughtful design, but not at this scale. The Monster project is just not a transition, it's an imposition. It overshadows the neighborhood, intruding in a way that's entirely out of the character with its surroundings. That is not an empty parking lot. Everyone keeps talking about an empty parking lot. It's also two residential B lots. And there are a few people here tonight that I saw from Lakeside Drive that are right on that road, Justine Wong being one of them, who bought a house on a single family road. So instead of blending in, it becomes an incompatible intrusion for the neighbors in close proximity to the project. I just ask you, would you want this on your road looming over your house in your backyard? Would you want that? Would you sign up for that? It's easy to say you would if it's, if you're across town. Easy to say you would. This project location is in direct violation of the master plan. Our master plan is more than just guidelines. It represents a $200,000 investment of taxpayer money that we're, we are so desperately in need of, a promise to protect the character of our town and preserve our neighborhoods. That was by far the most requested data point of any concept in the entire master plan, to preserve our neighborhoods. The residents of D1 have a right to expect that a guideline be upheld by our town leaders. We have dealt with the largest crime rate of any district, of any district in this town. D1 has the highest crime rate, stabbings, shootings, neighborhood lockdowns, and police chases through the neighborhood. I believe one last weekend at the reservoir. So throughout our neighborhood, all the time, it's this very frequent. There was a shooting in the Sears parking lot in June. Frequent. We expect the transparency that we were promised by our leaders and wondering where they are tonight. This isn't necessarily related, what I wrote, it's more about convergence. Should I hold on that?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. That's what I thought. Okay. So members of the planning board, I urge you to think carefully about your decisions today. I know they're not easy. Consider the legacy you want to leave for this town. Would you want a large-scale apartment building towering over your street? Would you feel comfortable with a lithium battery storage facility next to your home? We have a responsibility to protect our town's residents' property values, the largest investment most will ever make. The residents near ZOM will have to look up at a four-story building from their yards. Can't we do better? Can't we insist that this development be scaled to fit the character of the neighborhood? Can't we insist on neighborhood protections? Common sense would go a long way here. Thank you for your attention.
And just one second, if you start. Louise, we had two papers dropped off. Would it be easier if they emailed that in for your minutes? So Ms. Wadland was saying, if you could email those under the planning department while they do the minutes, that'll be easier for her to write that down. Thank you. Okay, please go ahead.
Hi, I'm Michael Foley from Parkside Avenue, the neighborhood formerly known and labeled as Honeymoon Village after World War II. The neighborhood's been around for the most part since World War II. Parts of it were there earlier. And I want to bring up something that people haven't discussed openly, the taxing of the infrastructure of the town's public utilities. I have an engineering background. I've, I've been an inspector. I've worked on water systems, been in water towers, and worked on sewer systems. My main concern is the tax on the sewer system. Our neighborhood had experienced the effects of a flood in the sewer system. It was overtaxed because it's undersized and the pumping station couldn't keep up with it. Back in 2010, in 2006, I think, there was two extreme rain conditions, like 15 or 30 year floods of water inundated the streets. I even saw the chief of police directing traffic over a flooded road, State Highway 37. We had several homes on Parkside Avenue fill up with sewage. And I was lucky, I got notification that somebody was getting sewage, so I had plugs to plug up my laundry tub in my, my basement. So I knew it was coming, so I put the plugs in the laundry tub and stopped it. Now, after that, there was another flood. And the town had hired a pumping company for sewage to bypass the system and pump it further down the line. And that prevented the whole neighborhood from having a much higher incidence of flooding. Now, I know with experience for the town, I've been in the pumping stations before they replaced one of them. And it was like three quarters or more of fresh water. There was really a ton of water, so they had to pump and put it in a brand new pumping station to handle the inflow. And now, I don't know what happened, if the system is failing or the pipes underground, which seem to all be clay, vetrified clay doesn't handle up, hold up well underground, and it cracks and it lets in fresh water. We pay for so much fresh water in our sewer system. If you actually knew the numbers, the public would be protesting Town Hall because you pay for sewage on the amount of water you use. And now we're getting tons of fresh water into the sewer pipes. And I was wondering if there was any concern with the town or if it's been brought up with the planning board that a project of this size bringing the equivalent of up to 300 homes online and I'm downhill from the line going towards the pumping station on Common Street. If anything's been done to upgrade possibly the pipes or to make another sewer pumping station, it's something that has to be looked at. If they want to put this project in, and obviously I'm not for it, I'd rather see retail space built. They, they seem to be the most reliable, unless you've got a manager like Simon on the property and have a problem with money flow and you need to sell off your land. But I think the town has to be made aware, if this project gets approved, that you're going to have another 300-plus homes on the sewer line that could barely hold it the way it is now. And I, I actually did talk to the engineering department years ago, and I asked them what the problem was. I said, your sewer pipes are clay. What's wrong? He goes, oh, they're fine. So they opted to just put in a new pumping station. That's a Band-Aid. I don't want to lose my property. I don't want to have any loss because of sewage. My wife said, if it ever happened again, we're selling the house. We will not stay. And I think it's a big oversight that should be taken more seriously. Thank you very much.
Hello, Madam Chairperson, members of the planning board. My name is Liz Page. I live at 137 St. Louis Ave. And I am following up on a letter that I submitted through the planning director, Melissa Santucci-Rozzi, dated August 8, 2024. As proposed by the applicant, MUPUD still deliberately omits the Braintree zoning bylaw 135 dash 612 E parentheses 2 parentheses lowercase a. This bylaw addresses the quote, "character of the development in the abutting neighborhoods", end quote. Since this is the only item that addresses the neighborhood's compatibility, it is critical that this should be included and applied to any PUD proposal. At the meeting on August 13 in 2024, planning board chairperson Crowha expressed concern for the omission of this particular bylaw, which I addressed in my letter at that meeting. While the bylaw is still omitted, it has not been addressed, even though they have reworked some of their other stuff. They continue to ignore the compatibility with our neighborhood. The only compatibility they are thinking of with this proposal is compatibility with the South Shore Plaza. They do not care about the neighborhood. They minimize the neighborhood at every opportunity. They say it's not close. They pretend we don't exist. I am asking you to make sure this doesn't happen. The applicant is ignoring our neighborhood. The applicant never addresses the neighborhood. The applicant never addresses the abutting residential neighborhood in the proposal. We, the residents of this neighborhood, need this protection to preserve and protect the style and the character and the scale of our neighborhood. It should be the top priority of town officials. Please do not let this proposed zoning change remove the protections for the residential neighborhood. At this time, an unfavorable recommendation is warranted, and I hope you will concur with me and vote an unfavorable recommendation. Thank you for your time.
And just real quick before you go, it is getting to be a little bit later. I know we have a line of people up to speak, and so I'm going to let the line of people who are there to speak, but I'd like to cut off public comment after that and move on to the board questions and comments. So please proceed.
I'll be real quick. My name's Lorraine DiAndrea. I live at 169 Walnut Street. I just had a couple of questions. Since I missed the last meeting, but the, all the other meetings I have been at, my question is, has the South Shore Plaza since we've met, so they haven't still to this day provided you guys with anything for Braintree? So we're still there?
Depends how you view the presentation, but the presentation was what it was. There isn't anything that was presented that isn't available to the public.
Right, okay. But again, we still have nothing from them. They're always supposed to have a five-year plan with us, and they've never done that. So, okay. And is there anything preventing them, they sell this property to ZOM and allow them to build this? Is there anything going to prevent them from selling up other bits of property in there to another developer and another developer? And before you know it, there's no more mall. That's gone, it's all apartment complexes. That would be my next question to you guys. And like so many others feel like this is already a done deal because we don't hear from the mayor, she's like a ghost. And everyone talks about not in my backyard, but this is in our backyard. And Mr. Lyden mentioned the light department in East Braintree. I grew up in East Braintree. That was here before him and I were even born. We went to school together. So he can talk about that, that's been here forever. We're not against development. It just needs to be in the right places. And we do have a lot of abandoned property currently today in Braintree that should be looked at and repurposed before we start building everywhere and taking down every tree and just using up every space that doesn't need to be used. Let's use what we already have built in and refurbish it. You know, I'm not, the people from ZOM are very nice. And what they want to do is very nice, just not in that spot. But that's basically all I had to say. And I hope you make the right choice for our town, not just the neighborhood.
Good evening. My name is Steve Shasha, Hollis Ave. My printer died tonight, so I'm going to try to read this off my screen. I want to focus on one particular comment that the applicant made in the meeting. And I will quote directly. This is a different kind of zoning, superior zoning. It requires concept plans, 7612 C3. So nobody is mistaken by it because we heard in prior testimony, in the hearings previously, that plans weren't required. That's not true. Absolutely required by 612 C3. A prior testimony, I assume he means me. If Section 612 C were required for a zoning change, creating a PUD district, then they would not meet the requirements of Section C. Literally, requirement one is the site under review shall be located in a PUD zoning overlay district, which this is not. These requirements are for when and if this, this comes before the planning board for a special permit after the zoning change. This is important. And if you don't believe me, read Melissa's staff comments. This section is applicable when and if a PUD is approved by the council. Not now. This is important because they keep focusing on this concept plan. Why do they keep going over the concept plan again and again? Well, as Melissa said in August of 23, the concept plan is simply that, a demonstration of what could be built under the zoning. The problem is that a lot of what they say they are doing is not in the zoning at all. Another quote from Melissa, noting that the plan is just a concept plan, the shape and form of the multifamily residential could be very different based on the special permit process. But they want to keep you focused on the concept plan. Here's one example of how they use this to deceive this board, the town council, and the residents. In the last go-around on this project, if you look from version one to version three of their concept plans, they went from an open space walking path to a gravel path to a paved road. Why? For fire access. Now, there is some dispute as to whether you need a road to circle a building entirely for fire access, but there is no dispute that the National Fire Prevention Code requires no more than a 250-foot distance from the road to the building. This building is approximately 370 feet by 600 feet, meaning to be within 250 feet of, of each side of the building, you must have a road in the back. Again, you know, I'm an imby. You don't believe me? Read what Melissa wrote in her 10-4 staff report. Subject to the special permit process, Lakeside Drive may serve as a secondary means of access for life and fire safety vehicles. That's from the planning department. You don't see that in their concept plan. Everybody knows that they're going to have to put a road back there, and they're going to come back and say, oh, it's not our fault, the fire department made us do this. They know that that's going to be a requirement. They refuse to put it in their concept plan, and that's why they want the concept plan. They can keep putting misleading information, they can put all the pretty pictures they want in there, none of those things are in the zoning. As far as open spaces concerned in the concept plan, they're going to lose a big chunk of it because all their open space is in an area that is going to eventually need to be a road. On top of that, they don't show in there what's in that space currently. They keep saying it's an unused parking lot. As somebody pointed out earlier, it's actually two residential parcels, but more than that, it's almost three acres of old growth trees. What the residents have asked for repeatedly is if you want to build this project, just move it back. There's supposed to be a 100-foot buffer. That tree area is just over 100 feet. This project moved back would actually use unused parking areas. Instead, they're tearing down trees to put this in, and they're going to leave acres and acres of unused parking. That makes no sense, and it's offensive to the neighborhood that this is the only place on the property they can put it. You know, if you read through Melissa's comments carefully, you will see that she is couching her language. Right? In one of her conclusions, she says that the concept plan as presented demonstrates substantial grading and landscaping buffers have been thoughtfully placed. But again, the concept plan as presented does not reflect what the zoning requires or allows. or allows. It's just a bunch of pretty pictures." In addition, "The MUPD is the first step and could be viewed as a catalyst," right? But go back to what Melissa said last year. "Opportunities for improvement and diversification of uses, building form, facades, hardscape architecture, et cetera, all exist at this location, yet what we're presented is limited to 8% of the property." Simon made a guest appearance last time, and they showed a bunch of pretty pictures of other malls that they did invest in. They didn't even bother to come back tonight. The idea that this is a catalyst, that somehow after years of giving Simon everything that they asked for, from parking reductions to use changes, that this is going to be the thing that makes all the difference? What happens if you're wrong? Now, Member McComme, you said in the last meeting about the Chick-fil-A development. You want to ensure zero risk for Braintree. ZOM is going to build this and walk away in a couple of years. That's their MO. They build and sell. Simon is going to pocket tens of million dollars, and they're going to walk away from the table. They've already walked away from the table. What happens if this is not the catalyst? What happens if the tens of millions of dollars in reduction in value that we've seen in their building because they refuse to invest in this property continues? And who takes responsibility for that? All we're asking is that we follow what, again, Melissa said earlier. "The clear distinction between desirable centers, which is what we want, and the current proposal, our community support, a clear long-term vision of the property, and a fairly robust planning effort. The planning director finds no logical reason why a PUD for the entire property is not forthcoming." That's what we want. We want a plan for the entire property. If this is allowed to happen piecemeal, as Bill Grove said earlier, you lose all of your leverage. What we're asking is for the planning board to take responsibility for what happens with the plaza. Not to listen to Simon give vague promises about what they've done for other malls. Think about who's at risk here if this continues. And that's it. Thank you.
I'd just like to thank the planning board for conducting this hearing because it's good I think the number of units has been reduced from 499 to 325, but if you do the math, that's 650 parking spaces. A man and woman, or a man and man, or a woman and woman, they're going to have two cars. So, at rush hour, if you've ever sat on Granite Street at rush hour, you know the traffic nightmare that is on Granite Street. All these vehicles are going to be funneling onto Granite Street. That's nuts. That's not even, I don't even know how to, I can't even imagine approving such a traffic burden to North Braintree. I also have a question. If, can I ask a question? Was the Town of Braintree ever approached by the plaza to buy the property? And I only say this because North Braintree really could use a park. Why not build a park here for the residents of North Braintree? I know right now with the focus on tax streams and tax revenue, how wonderful this project could be on the front end, but you're not seeing the whole picture, I think. You're not doing the right thing if you approve this project. It's a burden. 100 years from now, it'll be an even bigger burden for the residents of North Braintree. Thank you.
Mike Ford, Cardinal Court. Before I get started with my comments, I want to commend the planning board for keeping that cool up there tonight. Some of the comments that have been made directly towards you, talking about backroom deals and middle fingers and couching remarks, I found offensive, being an observer. So, you got, you people must have been very offended by some of the comments that were made. That being said, change is hard, and change is the only constant in life. We need to continue to evolve and grow as a town. I remember driving through Braintree Five Corners when there were no traffic signals. I remember when the South Shore Plaza was open-air. We've changed those things, and probably for the better. Speaking of the mall, there was a time when Quincy and Braintree, the mall, were kind of fighting for supremacy when it came to retail. Thankfully, for the Town of Braintree and for the plaza, the mall won out. We, the town, have benefited for decades from all of our retail properties and the taxes they bring. Right now, the retail landscape is changing. Brick-and-mortar business, if not going away, is certainly downsizing. The plaza is at a crossroads and needs to re-envision its offerings. And while this is just a sale of land for the mall, it absolutely strengthens that position. Studies have shown that the current workforce want to live, work, and play in the same area. The former Lord &amp; Taylor Building has been rezoned for life sciences. Perhaps this housing will spur that development forward. I was not around for the building of Devon Woods, but I was sitting right where you are for Lennox Farms and Jonathan's Landing, and I mention those projects because they're in my neighborhood. Other projects where it was going to be the worst thing that ever happened to that particular part of town, and I'm not, and I'm sure there's still people here that think we made the wrong votes, took the wrong direction. The water would be an issue. Traffic would be terrible, and the impacts of school would be unbearable. While water issues can be mitigated, traffic is not going away, and I believe it's because of our location, with crosstown traffic coming from different towns and cutting through the different highways to the different highways. And school enrollment has been declining over the years. It's impossible to please everybody all at the same time. Is this a perfect project? Probably not. But to quote Mark Twain, "Continuous improvement is better than delayed perfection." And I believe this is improvement. This is not the last housing development that will be for this town in the coming years. We need housing for the workforce to spur the economic development Braintree needs. This is not an attack on one neighborhood, but rather an opportunity for the entire town. Let's change the narrative from the negative and realize the positive benefits. This influx of tax revenue could mean the Braintree. There's been no significant growth in towns for years. Some of you have heard me say, "If the town's not growing, it's dying." Or, "We just put the town on life support a few months ago with a tax override." Let's not need to take those drastic measures again, and I ask you to vote in favor of this petition. Thank you.
And just before you get started, it is afternoon, was it? I don't know. 8:30. I can't tell time. I just see there's two more people who want to speak. If you could keep it very short, like a minute or less, we do have four more applications after this. I do need to move the hearing along.
I'll just try to speak a little bit faster. Hi, I'm Rob Cadyer of 143 Middle Street. I'm just here to say that this project is completely incompatible with the neighborhood. This project serves as nothing more than a Band-Aid, a temporary half-fixed measure. Adding residential, particularly on this scale, will cost the town far more than it'll bring in. Based on the developer's projection, they claim that only 20 kids will be attending the schools. For a 300-unit apartment, what are the odds that there'll be that low of a student population? I think that's a little inaccurate. Not only schools, but electricity, water, police, fire, other utilities, those will all be strained as well. Other towns which have built up recently, including Weymouth, has been having frequent issues with water and water restrictions. This thing might gain you a little bit of, like, a tiny amount net gain from initial fees during the construction and before the opening, but once people moved in, you might as well be lighting the town's money on fire at that point. Developers like this, by developers like this, are often sold off, and it's no longer their problem. ZOM sees this town as a cash cow. What happens afterwards, be damned. Braintree Village, for example, was once allotted as a model for development, and look how that turned out. Skyline, I believe, was the same way. In the end, the developers get their money, and we deal with the fallout. This proposal should be rejected. Shut down. And all of us, as a town, government and residents, should come together and discuss what a better course of action for this particular spot would be. I've seen comments about maybe building a sportsplex, which I think would be a great idea. That'd bring in revenue from tournaments and general use, as well as address the town's lack of a hockey rink or that pool that we've been waiting on for about 50 years now. I rolled in late, and I don't know if Simon had any reps here, but feel free to take that as an idea. Bottom line, once the developer gets to force their projects through, no matter how out of place it is for the neighborhood and for the town itself, you won't be able to put the genie back in the bottle. There will be more developers, and that will essentially be the equivalent of the signature on Braintree's death certificate. So, when it comes down to this, it comes down to what you, the members of this board, decide. I hope, and thousands of other residents hope, that you'll stand with the people and not with the big, out-of-state corporate developer. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Carolyn Moore. I live at 56 Howie Road. I didn't really have anything planned to say tonight because, at the risk of repeating myself, I have heard loud and clear that we want to move this along. We want to be in a hurry. However, we have been here more times than I can count at this point, and I'm here officially, truly asking for an answer to a question that has been posed by myself as well as others. And I'm wanting to hold accountable our elected and appointed officials, who, for whatever reason, refuse to lay down the law with Simon Miles and ask, "What is their long-term plan?" As elected and appointed officials, you are in a position to give us a sense of security, to let us know that they are going to do something that will continue to increase our tax base, our revenue, make us feel safe, do something that we all can stand by. So many things, like, we've heard about Derby Streets, every place else that draws so many people, but they just, they could only do one token appearance. They don't show up. They refuse to say anything about what they want to do long-term. And for whatever reason, the people that represent us refuse to say, "We're not moving forward with anything," until we know and have a commitment about all of your land for the next 10 years, not just a parcel, not a little. There is zero commitment, and why aren't they being held to that? If I plan to live in my house for the next 10, 20, 30 years, you can bet you are counting on my tax dollars to go towards what runs this town. Why aren't we asking them what to do? If my house falls into disrepair and the value goes down and it's considered an ISO or something else, someone's going to be on my front lawn. Why aren't we asking them to do the same? This shouldn't be something that divides a town. Even the people that are for this project should be stomping their feet, saying, "What do they plan on doing long-term? Why do we have to sit with this insecurity of not knowing what it can be, what it will be?" Because we can talk about a premier shopping facility, but it doesn't seem like it to me. Lord &amp; Taylor's gone, Long's is gone. All of the biggest places are gone. It's just not what they're saying it is. And now I'm just holding accountable the people that are sitting in front of me, the people who are representing our district, and everybody else that wants it. Why aren't you insisting that Simon Miles tells us what they plan to do with every square inch of their land for the next 10 to 20 years? Thank you.
Thank you to everyone who spoke this evening, spoke in August, participated in the community meetings, submitted letters. I'm going to turn it over to Director Santucci Razi. You know, we received an updated staff report. If there's anything you'd like to go over for the board and the public this evening?
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you. So, I have prepared for the board, Staff Report Number Two, and as you can see, I highlighted those comments in blue just to stand out. A lot of the comments haven't changed, and some of them have changed. Most of the changes are related to the work that the planning department, our administration, and the applicant team have been doing over the past few months, which has been the coordination with our peer consultant on the fiscal review, and also looking at the text of the MUPD and wordsmithing that, cleaning that up. There were some things in there that frankly don't belong in zoning. And I just want to remind everyone that, again, we're looking at a zoning bylaw here. We're not looking at site plan review application or a special permit application, and I want to make sure that we make the distinction between what would apply in an ordinance and what would be something that would be a condition in a future development if and when that comes forward. I have provided for the board and the public two sets of text. I apologize for the red-line version, not one of my strong suits. And then also the clean copy, which is dated 10-3, which really just is, I put some tables in there just to kind of make the text flow a little bit more. One of the other major changes to the text was, when this was in front of us previously, we had a pending inclusionary bylaw. That's no longer pending, so we worked on tightening up the language around the affordable components. Also, spent some time, really, again, just having the language be more like a zoning bylaw. I don't know how many times I can say that, but there were some things in here, and the way that they were worded were sort of reactions to things that we heard in the community. So, again, just cleaned that up, expanded upon the parking tables and use tables, again, looking at all of the different uses that we have on the South Shore Plaza proper and making sure that they were included. Place of assembly, place of amusement, recreation, those have been some uses that have made their way over to the plaza over the past couple of years with the Orange Theory, Top Golf, excuse me, not Top Golf. What was the name of that place? Golf Lounge, I'm sorry, Golf Lounge, that have made their way over to the plaza, which, again, represents a bit of diversification beyond your typical retail uses. Also included in here are the most recent, to-date, public comments that we received, and also Mr. Seidman's report. In my actual staff report, on the last page is where I put together the recommendation. The reality is, is that a lot of things and various demands have been made to the plaza over the various years for different forms of materials. What are you doing? What are you not doing? Et cetera, et cetera. And the reality is, is that has not been productive for this community. We've had ample opportunity to look at different things at the plaza. There was somebody here that mentioned some recreation use. Well, we had that opportunity years ago, and again, that was not successful locally. So, there's been several attempts. There's been multiple forms of dialogue having taken place in the town, and again, nothing's happened. And who's left here holding the bag? Well, it's the Town of Braintree that's holding the bag, and it's empty. There's no money in it. So, I want to shift gears into the recommendation, Madam Chair. I'd like to just maybe answer any questions that the board has before I get into that. If there was anything relative to my report that was unclear, or the board members would like me to expand upon.
Great. Member McComme?
No.
Member Ken?
If this is the time and the place, I guess I'm more than a little disappointed that there's nobody here from the plaza. We had asked previously, and I believe it's reflected in the minutes, tell us what your general idea is for the next umpteen years or several years, and how you think this is going to play out. They said, "Well, that's a hard question, and it's harder to put it in writing." I get that, up to a point. But questions that I had, I have 10 of them here. I'll read a couple of them. What's the five-to-10-year plan for the plaza? I don't think we can expect ZOM to answer that question. What's going on with the Lord &amp; Taylor wing? I don't think we can expect ZOM to ask that question. What's going on with Sears and Macy's? What's going on with David? What's going on with Dave &amp; Buster's? Is that parking lot a potential for the next, you know, development project? What's going on with the Nordstrom wing? What's going on with leases expiring? How much more of the 110 acres does Simon Properties control? How much is subject to conditions and tenant leases? Why would Long's Jewelers move out of the plaza and down the street into their own huge building? What's the, one of tenants leases up? What's the, is there a waiting line for current tenants? And I could go on and on and on, but there's nobody here from Simon to answer that. And I like context and that's missing as a result of this meeting. So I guess I'm disappointed is probably an understatement. I think it puts Zom and council in a terrible position. And, you know, so here we are. What's up, Simon Properties? That's my, I don't know whether that's a question or a shout, but that's the way I'm feeling right now.
Thank you, Member Ken. Member Conley?
Thank you. I would echo the concern that Simon's absence tonight is very concerning to me. In terms of the questions from public comment, the gentleman that raised questions about the sewer, could staff provide some information as far as remediation or, like, inflow and infiltration that the town is either has underway or might be doing to address that?
I'm not comfortable answering specific questions about the sewer system. What I can tell you is that the town is aware of where there's capacity and where there isn't capacity and if there's upgrades to existing infrastructure that need to be met based on any development, whether it's this or any, you know, that's something that the applicant or the developer would need to provide.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And with respect to the PUD language, there were two comments raised tonight that I want to address also. The first one, Ms. Page had mentioned whether the neighborhood protection sections of 612 were included in there. And I know the revised version in Section B of 617 includes all of 135-612, so it does wrap in those neighbor protection sections. I know that was a change that was made between the last meeting and here. But what I thought might be a suggestion also is, so we have the new 617B, if it gets put in with applicability, and the next one is C. And at the bottom of C, it talks about if the MUPUD is approved by the Town Council, the Braintree Planning Board, the Special Permit Granting Authority may grant a special permit for the construction of a PUD in the MUPUD. And I thought maybe we could add at the end of that, in its discretion pursuant to sections 135-503, which is our special permit requirements in our regular bylaw, and also just, again, reference 135-612, including those neighbor subsections E and F, if that makes sense.
Yes, Madam Chair, just to reiterate, I understand the relationship to 503I. And then the second part, I'm sorry.
Just to reiterate, in that Section C, that the special permit is also governed by all of the provisions of 612, including the 612 that's already in our zoning, including subsections E and F, which are the two sections of 612 that talk about different factors the planning boards should be looking at to ensure that the neighborhood is protected during the special permit process.
Madam Chair, I just want to look at, is 612, I'm just guessing, it's the part, that's the process part, that says that you're, I just have to pull it up if people can just bear with me.
Yeah, so 612E is the density and dimensional requirements. And the second paragraph of that talks about how the SPGA shall consider the following factors, including the character of development in the abutting neighborhoods, which I think was the specific point referenced earlier. And I know that some of those factors do deal with the process that we're going through now, which is the PUD and not the special permit, but I didn't, reading it, see any harm with reiterating that those are appropriate factors to weigh once we have more information during the special permit.
Special permit, okay, for the construction of a PUD. Madam Chair, I understand about adding E and F. I just, I always get concerned about, and I, you know, looking back now, I might have taken that out. I don't know, why are we referencing just a few sections? Should we just say 612?
Yeah, I think that works. Maybe reference 503 and 612 to get the factor.
Yeah, because 612 is really what's going to govern the permitting, implement, you know, all of that stuff of the, along with the special permit stuff. So can we just scratch the B and just say Section 135-612?
And can we add 503 for the special?
Yeah, I have that, yeah.
Okay, great.
So may grant a special permit pursuant to Section 135-503I, which is the criteria for the construction of a PUD in the MUPUD. Section 135, can I move up 135-612 and have it together? So the SPGA may grant a special permit pursuant to 135-503I and 135-612?
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
Both of them equally together and weighted? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. And with some of the comments that were raised tonight, the open space, the play area, the sewer, the water utilities, the traffic, and Simon's participation through a plan and investment, the process, I understand those are questions and those are all good questions. And if it moves forward through here and moves forward through Town Council, there is a special permit. And what the special permit process allows the board to do is it allows the board to hire peer review at the applicant's expense to look closely at the sewer, look at the water, look at the traffic, and understand what impacts those would have on the neighborhood and what needs to be done can be done to mitigate those. So this is truly a first step in the process and there are a lot of very good questions. We don't have that much information and it's not set up to be where we can have everything in this process. The special permit is where the bylaws and the state law gives the town more leverage and more of an ability to request additional information from the applicant and from third-party reviewers that are looking at their information. The other point on the bylaw that's proposed and Steve Sash's comment about the concept plan is that one thing we might want to consider is conditioning any recommendation or including in a recommendation to council that they condition any approval on ensuring that the, that any special permit application that's presented doesn't deviate materially from the concept plan.
Madam Chair, can you repeat that?
So, including in any recommendation that if council votes to approve the PUD, that they include as a condition in that approval that any special permit application does not deviate from the concept plan materially. Or I suppose in a manner that negatively impacts the community. So if they wanted to come in with a smaller plan for some reason, it doesn't prohibit that, but...
Yeah, I think, and also, Madam Chair, I think that the, you know, if something was filed pursuant to the PUD zoning and the planning board felt as though it was, the planning board could simply reject that, that it's not, you know, would be no different than filing for a single-family home in the commercial district. You know, it doesn't, it's not allowed there. It doesn't, it isn't something that we, so I, and it would be coming, the planning board would be the one that would see things afterwards, or first, after, if they did come back with Do you think it would make sense to add something into the text of the ordinance? That that is something that the planning board needs to find? I mean, you know, as we, you know, before we, well, the applications filed that gets advertised, well, if it wasn't in keeping with the concept plan, we likely wouldn't accept it. We can't, you know, prohibit applications. But that is something, or one of the votes, the planning board obviously is going to be making substantial findings if and when something does come forward, but we could include as an additional, in addition to the 503 findings, the special permit findings, which is probably where this would end up, that we make a finding that the application is submitted is in keeping with the concept plan. And that's done in the beginning so that then that kind of, okay, so they know that their either, their concept is either in keeping or it's not in keeping.
Right. Yeah, I think that makes sense. We could probably add that right at the end of that.
The process paragraph?
Right.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. Okay.
That's my only questions with respect to the start of the report and the bylaw itself.
Madam Chair?
Yes?
I have a question for staff. Can a timeframe be put on that as far as when the development would have to take place to, no, thank you.
I know we talked previously about having a two-year timeframe and that didn't work for some reason and I can't remember why that didn't work, but...
That they would need to exercise it within two years? I don't recall, Madam Chair.
Yeah. I guess we could maybe include that in a recommendation that they need to exercise it in two years and then if we get feedback from a zoning perspective that that doesn't work from a legal zoning perspective, we could...
Would you be comfortable advising me to reach out to KP and see if that's something that is lawful? And then I could add that to the report that goes to the council?
Yeah, yeah, that sounds like that would work. We could add that as a proposed recommendation if legal counsel says that that works.
Um, I just, I would just want to be clear, Madam Chair, I'm asking, are we asking, how long are we asking, what kinds of, or just a timeframe in general?
Right. Are you, Member Conley, would you be comfortable with two years or did you have something else in mind?
I would defer to staff for what seems feasible.
Well, I mean, we've, I've never, I mean, typical zoning has no type of, you know, this is an overlay, so do we have an overlay on billboards? Do we have, you know, excuse me, we have an overlay on billboards, we have an overlay for MBTA, we have a village overlay. Do any of those overlays prescribe times in which people need to perform? The answer's no. But I'll ask KP. I would, you know, I think, and we're talking about the filing of an application and it would be from the date that the ordinance goes into effect. I would say three years. That's what the state law says now for a special permit. So even if you have a permit in hand, you don't have to exercise it for three years according to state law under a special permit. That would, you know, this is a concept with a PUD rezone and, you know, things take a little bit of time to put those together.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
So I will reach out to KP and I'll be inquiring if it's lawful to put a date in which the zoning needs to be exercised, a timeframe.
Thank you. All right. And do you want to move forward with describing your recommendation at this point? Director Santucci-Razi?
Can I ask one more question, please? So if the item that we're being asked to vote on tonight, if that is approved, acknowledging that the highest and best use of those, of that space is not a parking lot, what leverage do we have if we recommend an approval of this to the committee to get Simon Properties in here to tell us what they're thinking?
I'm sorry, can you repeat the last part?
Does approving a positive recommendation that the Town Council then also approves, how much do we lose our leverage with Simon Properties to compel them to tell us what they have in mind for the 110 acres?
Lose leverage? I mean, the reality is, let's go back to when we originally were asking and this notion of this plan came, nothing's happened since then. So literally, absolutely, actually, the mall has actually retracted. Aside from vehicle charging stations and a gym here and, like, nothing, nothing has really happened. The reality is, is we're asking for this plan because we want to know what they're going to develop, but a lot of people don't want to support any development and I don't mean the planning board members or specifically. I think I personally, I have moved on from that specific and I was actually probably the crafter of that idea and really trying to understand. The reality is, there is no master plan for the entire property. We don't have that information and I think if we sit and continue to wait for that, exactly what's happened over the last five years will happen there and that's absolutely nothing. At this point, and as you can see in the staff report, it's time for us to make a move. And if we, if we don't make a move here, we're not going to know if it's going to be a success or a failure. And the reality is, I think that we really need to focus on looking as a community what we have in front of us and making the best decisions we can, given those materials.
Can I ask a follow-up?
Yes, sure.
So, does that mean that if we start down this process and we ask the plaza or Simon for something, a plan or multiple plans or whatever, and they don't agree to that or supply it, that this project could be delayed?
The answer's no. There is no requirement for an individual property owner to produce a master plan. The reality is, is the town was, didn't produce their own master plan for a long time and we were not in compliance with that either. I, I really think the days of looking for that document and holding other things up is, it hasn't been productive for us. And I continue to hear from people and through the master planning process, "We got to do something with the plaza, we got to do something with the plaza." We highlighted it as a transition revitalization zone in our master plan and what people think that is probably could have 15 different meanings. The reality is, and is highlighted in the report here, is this land is just underproducing. We need, we need to do better with every square foot of land in this community and this is the first step. Is there, like I said, is there a master plan for the mall? I doubt it. Are they going to submit that? I really don't think that that's going to happen, Member McCamey. It would have, I would think it would have already been something that was provided given the lack of cooperation the town has been in with the social plaza for a very long time, at least the last four years. long time, at least the last four years for sure. So it, like I'm talking here, four, five, six years, back to Topgolf, nothing's happened. We've asked for this plan, there is no plan. I mean, there's literally, I, I think, I mean, if people think that they have all these ideas and they just don't want to share them, I, I really don't think that's the case. I think that they're eager to do something there, and I think that they want to try to transform this area. All, a lot of the residents here, a lot of the people in Braintree, where do they go to shop? They go to areas outside of the community, and they, but they all have multifamily housing at them. Because everywhere that we go, most of the places that we go include that, and the malls that don't are looking at that currently. I think it's time for us to really make a move here and work together with ZOM and the Plaza and, and look at this as the first step towards something. Maybe, who knows, maybe now if, if, if people see that the town is looking favorably upon something, other things could fall in line. But again, if you're looking to spend money in the real estate market, and you've been looking at what's been going on with the Plaza, and, and the relationship with the town, and them not being able to do things with the zoning down there, it might not be your first choice.
Right. But, but if I'm not mistaken, in a recent application that we had for Grove Plaza, we made the owners come to the table because it was a long list of deficiencies.
Yes.
Same at some other plazas, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes, you are correct.
So that, that's what I'm saying.
Yes.
I agree with you that they may not have a master plan, but to have them not show up and to have no, you know, discourse with the mayor and the town is unacceptable. And while we might, you know, this project may or may not be good, you know, I don't see any reason, and I, you know, holding ZOM a little hostage like, like we have with the other tenants in some of the other plazas in order to get some things accomplished.
Yes.
At least start the conversation.
And I, I know there's been a lot of comments from the public about different things at the Plaza, and just like we do, again, we do not have an application in front of us, we have zoning in front of us. And I want to reassure the public, just like we do, and you'll see later on in the agenda for somebody that's come forward with an application, the first thing that we do is we go out to the property and do a full compliance review. Do I wish we could be out at every site every week? Of course. We, we are just drowning in work, and we're down to one building inspector. So unfortunately, we don't have the capacity or even the means to, to staff things at the level that would be able to, to do that. But I'm very confident in, in my department and my staff that when and if an application comes forward, they will get a checklist, and they will be held to the same standard that Granite Plaza is held to, Tedeschi's Plaza, and, and some other applications that you'll see later in the agenda.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, and I do think that some of the mitigation that's required is going to have to be on Simon Properties outside of this, between the buffering and traffic and whatever else it might be. So I do think that they'll be a necessary part of that conversation if we get to that point.
Madam Chair, may I?
Yes.
I'd just like to read the recommendation, if I can. I'm just going to read it from the report, just a little bit easier for me this evening. Since the August public hearing, the planning staff has been working with Carl Seidman on coordinating town department participation data collection and question answering. The work also included an onsite, onsite meeting with several town departments, including Mayor Joyce. Mr. Seidman has completed his review and issued a report on October 2nd, which we heard about this evening, and which he presented his methodology and his findings, which I've included the summary in this, in this report, that he is more in line with the $400,000 to $600,000 range, which the value has in fact, excuse me, which the value that Mr. Forgé had projected does in fact fall within that range. In addition to the peer work, the staff has had an opportunity to work with the applicant team to fine tune the P, MUPUD text to ensure the overlay is comprehensive, complete, and covers all the language to ensure the proposed text is compliant with 135-612, provided both red line and clean copies for the public and the, and the board. The MUPUD ordinance is just that and not a special permit decision. All the items specifically related to the site plan review criteria and PUD special permit will, will be addressed in the future decisions, when and if sought. The planning staff is in the position to recommend that the MUPUD zoning move forward. The town and state's policies on development and housing are clear. If people are not spending money and creating new real estate growth in Braintree, our financial base isn't growing either. The trends in retail centers and transitioning older centers all provide for residential uses. The live-work-play model is alive and thriving in Massachusetts, and it's time that Braintree uses their existing retail stock, land, and excess, excess infrastructure for something more productive. The days of empty parking lots, access asphalt, open space with no public use, or recreational benefit need to end. The zoning process has allowed and further encouraged discussion and dialogue with town staff, the administration, and residents. The dialogue has been informative, cooperative, and educational. Allowing the South Shore Plaza to diversify and partner with ZOM Living is the first step in transforming the regional shopping center in a manner that will serve the public and benefit the community as a whole. This process has enabled the planning staff to complete the analysis, work with the appropriate professionals, and most of all, have dialogue with several residents, both in favor and opposition. There is no development without dialogue. Our master plan highlighted the South Shore Plaza as a transition area. This MUPUD proposal is one of many steps this town will take to aid in that transition. For the reasons contained in the staff report, and the, the planning staff recommends the planning board make a favorable recommendation on this zoning text and map amendment. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. All right. Do any members have any last thoughts or questions? Member McCallum?
Yeah, I have a few questions. The applicant, Mr. Marinelli. I think we've beat the Simon Property attendance here pretty hard, but I know they're not your client, but I'm sure you'll relay it. And as the director said, they're obviously going to conduct a review if an application is in front of us. And I will say that in, in recent meetings, we have brought some of the other mall owners to the table and tried to get some of these things done. So you, I think, you know, you've heard it, enough said on that, we're, we're all in the same opinion, members of the community as well as the board. So I just have a few questions for you, Mr. Marinelli. It's been a while since we had, you know, your last proposal. Can you tell us, summarize for us, why you think this is a superior presentation or a project going forward versus what you came through with last time?
It is a superior use.
Okay, could you just summarize some of the highlights for us?
It is a highest and best use. Residential is needed everywhere, and particularly in Braintree, we need alternatives to single-family homes. I went through all of that on August 13th. The fact that all of the studies, the Harvard Center for, Joint Center for Housing, the Urban Land Institute, talks about the fact that the household composition has changed, that the majority households are single women, single men, couples without children. The married couple with, with children is not the majority household. So you, what ZOM builds, and Jim Dunlop is here and happy to talk about it as well, ZOM builds high-quality apartment homes for primarily young professionals and empty nesters, people who want to sell their home and stay in Braintree. They don't really have any opportunity now to have the quality apartment home that, that ZOM builds. So it is a superior product. You know, ZOM designs, ZOM designs for the site. You can see that with the orientation of the units, the balconies that look out to the water amenity. They don't do a vanilla box, they don't do anything that's cookie cutter, and you can see that from all of the elevations that we've, we've proposed. You won't have a better, more cooperative, national reputable developer than ZOM. And the fact that they're willing to invest and can invest, that they have the wherewithal to invest, the, the amount of money that's necessary, the $140 million worth of development, that's good for Braintree. I, I mean, we've, we've said that ad nauseam, all of the points about the, the need for the financial revenue. Mr. Seidman has validated everything that our report said. We have completely been transparent, honest, truthful, proceeded with integrity throughout this process. I can go down, get down through all of the comments on some of the statements that were made, but the, the monster here is obstruction. It's not some, it's not a redevelopment that goes from 495 down 170 units to 325. That's not a monster. The monster for our town is obstruction. As the planning director said, that if you keep trying to do something like this and you keep getting no, it really sends a message about Braintree, that despite its superior location, despite its built-out and mature neighborhoods where no one is threatened. I've lived here all my life, and PUD is a great zoning mechanism used everywhere. We have about 18 overlays already in our zoning bylaws, if you look at Article 3. So an overlay is nothing unusual. In fact, it's protective. When we talk about a neighborhood, we are not in a neighborhood. We are on South Shore Plaza land. Some of the comments that were made are just not accurate narratives. We don't cast a shadow on any home. The closest home is two football fields away. As far as some of the comment that was made and the personal insults that are always seem to be necessary, whether, we heard on May 9th, 2023, that housing is arsenic, that less housing is less arsenic, the chair felt that there was bullying going on, et cetera, during a public meeting. We've been very respectful and truthful about everything. You, you should want this project in being a leader in the town, in being a board. I, I would not understand, and I think a lot, most of the public that doesn't want to see overrides, that doesn't want to see our municipal services decline, which they will, they will decline without revenue, and we keep, can't keep going back to the taxpayers for more overrides, reduced services, and so forth. This is a, a very responsible company and a responsible development. And as you said, you know, this is just the first step. This is just philosophically that as, as everybody agrees, the property is underutilized, that's the primary requirement of a PUD, is that you read the purposes. It's been in our book, Section 612. And by the way, the deception was not anything from ZOM. The deception was by a speaker who said that a plan is not necessary. Please read Section 612, C3. You will see in there that it says specifically in black and white, I don't appreciate being told something by a non-lawyer, particularly about the law and about what it says. It says that there will be, there will be, there will be a concept plan, there will be a concept plan, such courtesy, but we're used to it after two years. It says there will be a concept plan submitted to town meeting, which now is town council. We adhere to the law. We have complied with the master plan, Chapter 41, Section 81D. We have complied with the master plan themes. We have complied with all of the purposes of PUD, and we have fulfilled all of that criteria.
Okay.
So, you know, as far as, as far as a master plan, I, you know, listen, if you're in the hotel business, what do you want to do with a built-out hotel? You want to fill rooms. If you have a 1.6 million square foot regional shopping mall, what do you want to do with space? You want to rent it. Is there a master plan? No, probably not. But imagine, imagine if you, if you staked your hopes on Blockbuster 20 years ago, okay? Where are they now? Everything is market-driven in the real estate industry. Read the industry trade journals, read, read the Wall Street Journal. Things are market-driven. And so who wants more than Simon to fill the Plaza? Some of the comments that were made are just, they're ludicrous, in the sense that a publicly-held company would intentionally destroy the value of a property. Imagine if you're a shareholder of Simon, how would you feel?
Yeah.
It's just not happening.
I, I get your gist, Mr. Marinelli, thank you. Have the police and fire, no, a few more questions, sir, I'm sorry. Have the police and fire departments reviewed the concept plan?
To my knowledge, you know, I, I think it's best directed to the planning director, but to my knowledge, yes. When we were on the site on August 28th with Mr. Seidman, the, and, and the mayor, and the fire chief, Chief Iola said he hadn't used the gate in 15 years.
Right.
They tested, et cetera. You know, and I think that most of that Laurie's Way area is actually owned by the Plaza. So in the special permit process, when we get into the details, there is opportunity to actually fortify the separation. Page seven of my application states that there's no ingress or egress to or from the residences to Lakeside. Lakeside has had a, a sign at the end, at the intersection of Lakeside and Walnut for decades. What does it say? I have a picture on my phone.
Yeah.
It says dead end. And, you know, if, we're not going to talk about crime because I don't want to.
Right, please.
I, I don't want to talk about the neighborhood and what's happened. It, it had nothing to do with the South Shore Plaza. But that doesn't hap, we don't have to get into those details.
Okay. I, I have, I have one other question, and I know we're not in the special permit review, but what kind of security systems is ZOM going to have on the buildings? Are there going to be cameras, or what, what are they going to have?
So when we, when we met with the, yeah, okay, well, I just want to finish about the police department, because we did meet with Chief Kahoon.
Okay.
And, and Deputy Chief Michelle, and we talked about some of the things that we can help the community with. And one of them is the camera, for example, that led to the police being able to get the number plate of that criminal who stabbed the young people in, at the AMC Theater. And, and if they did not have that camera at the end of Forbes Road, they would not have been able to notify other authorities, which eventually led to that arrest. So we're talking about, and we'll continue to talk with the police, about those kinds of mechanisms. Some of them aren't expensive. I mean, I even said to the police chief at, at the meeting, I would be happy as a local businessperson to try to gather some money because of our budgetary constraints, right? Because of our budgetary constraints, the police department doesn't have the money to, to do some of the things that I was hearing about and learning about and having an open mind about to try to help with in, in my community, where I've lived all my life.
Sure. I was kind of hoping Simon or ZOM would step up.
But ZOM certainly will. I can't speak for Simon, but.
I think Mr. Dunlop wants to make a comment.
You're talking about the multifamily building specifically, security.
Yeah.
We spend a lot of time.
Obviously, the residents are concerned about.
Sure, yeah.
And I'm sure you, you want to protect your asset.
Sure, yeah. And we, and as Frank was saying, we, we did meet with the police chief and discuss technology related to this property, on-mall property. But in any building that we design, we, we go through a lot of aesthetics, but a, a lot of technical as well, and security is one of them. So every, every entrance to the, you cannot get in the building without, without a security fob. And we, we do not have necessarily security guards. We don't, we don't ever really need them. We, we will supplement security as needed, but the garage entrance is secure, every entrance to the building is secure, every access point to an amenity or a resident floor or a resident building is, is secure electronically in the security system.
Okay.
Managed by the property manager, who is on-site.
Right.
Yeah.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, sure.
And I'm sure you overheard our comments about Simon, so.
Yeah, I, I can comment on that. I have, I have, I have conversations with Simon every week.
Okay.
They were, they are not here, and it isn't intended, an intended slight. They felt like and got feedback that their presentation at the August meeting, the, the presentation and how they approached development and using examples of other, other properties, how the development evolves with the initial start of a multifamily project sufficed for their process. They do not have. They do not have a master plan that they're just not sharing with you, and they do not feel like they're needed at every meeting. And to be honest with you, he asked, do you want me to come to this meeting? And we discussed what's new, and there's nothing new. And I said, I don't think you're needed. So, I don't, you know, if you want to hear more from them, they do not have a plan they can hand you, but if you want to hear more from them, they will be presenting more. They will be along the way, but this is a ZOM application. This is not a Simon application.
I understand that, but there's overarching.
I got you.
Partners. And we need some results, so. Okay, thank you, sir. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Member McCamey. Member Kent?
Yeah, I'm coming down off the ceiling at this point. I appreciate your comments. I think, for the record, if we check the minutes from that meeting, it was a positive thing that Simon Properties was here. I didn't even think to, it didn't even cross my mind that they wouldn't be here tonight. And I had a bunch of questions that would have helped provide context, and I'm disappointed that they're not here. But I guess I'm over it.
Thank you. Member Conley?
I have a question for staff. What options do we have in terms of a vote tonight? I think that this project should move in front of the town council, but not necessarily with a favorable recommendation.
The planning board can send no recommendation. They can send a favorable recommendation with some of the things that were already, there was a couple changes, and reach out to council, or they can send an unfavorable recommendation.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
To my earlier question, a favorable recommendation on this point does not necessarily mean that the project couldn't be held up if those in charge weren't satisfied with what was being presented.
If you are in support or you vote in favor of a favorable recommendation on the PUD, that does not mean that you are in favor of any particular site plan applications that come forward in the future. The details of every application for this area will be different, the specifics. You know, I wouldn't be able to determine at this point what those would be.
And if this is off course, please let me know, but I'm not sure I could be satisfied with the conditions of this project if I didn't have a sense of what other projects might be waiting in the, you know, in the bushes, so to speak, for other areas of that property. And that's not up to these folks.
That understood, and that's fair. Yes, understood.
All right. Oh, yes.
Well, up to Member Kent's question, when we had the financial review, there was talk of different projects, potentially six being in pipeline. Can you detail what those would be?
Yes, some of them are already permitted. They are in the report. Right? They are in the report. 99107 Hancock, which is Brian McGurty's building over here that we approved, that's, he's already started construction. 44 Allen Street, they're going to be doing demo, well, they've done quite a bit of abatement already, demo. So, one of them was 31, the other one was 56. We are in discussions with William Frazier about his properties in South Braintree Square. He's going to be looking to exercise the MBTA zoning. That number is based on some preliminary meetings that we've had and discussions and the permissible zoning in that district. 1139 to 1151 Washington Street is a pending rezone that's on the agenda later this evening. And then, the last one is a 40B that we deny that we continue to lose in court, and we will likely continue to lose, and that will be constructed, and that's 78 units. So, there's really, three of them are already permitted. And then, two, there was five. So, three are permitted, excuse me, two are permitted, one's in litigation, and two are in the planning stages.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, so I asked a lot of my questions earlier. I would just say, I think that the application in front of us is a good application. I understand it doesn't answer all of the questions that we have out there with the rest of Simon's property, with the specific impacts that the apartments might or might not include from traffic and sewer and all the things that we talked about earlier. But I think we have a whole process with us where we get to look at that through the special permit. This is a much different process than some of the other zoning changes that have come before us recently and are coming before us tonight where we really don't have any information. I know that the neighborhood is concerned about the proximity of the buildings to their homes, but I do think that this location makes sense where it's proposed. We, as a town, have repeatedly said we're looking for a high-end development, and a high-end development that overlooks the water is going to be much more high-end than one that's inside the mall or in the Dave and Buster's parking lot or somewhere else on the site. It's just, if you're looking at it from a real estate development standpoint, this is the location that makes sense, and it is. The property line is over 500 feet from the nearest house, and I know that's not, still doesn't feel good to be the nearest house or the nearest couple houses. I understand that. But I do think that this is a step forward, that is a very important step that we need to take as a town, understanding that we have the special permit process behind us, and we can look at the details and we can understand how that works going forward. The presentation we've received meets the factors of the PUD process. We had during the last iteration, a lot of silence from Simon. Simon did come in August and describe their process. I know it wasn't the same to give comfort to everybody, but it does, it does show some willingness to participate in the next stage, and we're not bound to approve the special permit. It's a highly discretionary process that we go through, and we have to understand and be comfortable with the details. Those details will allow us to include mitigation that protects the town, protects the neighborhoods, and will allow us to continue to put pressure on Simon to participate in Braintree's growth and to be a partner in how we move forward with the town. And I do think that we need to move forward, and I think that this is a good step in that. So, I don't have any further questions. I appreciate the information. I understand the neighborhood's concerns. I know my position is not where you'd like it to be, but I do think that it makes sense for the town as a whole, and I think that we can include some mitigation that makes it not how you're viewing it to be at the end of the day. And so, I'm hopeful that we can reach that balance during the special permit. And again, I'm one vote in the recommendation, and as we talked before, it's town council that actually decides whether or not the zoning is created. But I think the staff report and the actual language that was put together by Director Santucci-Razi and the applicant, and then modified with some of the comments tonight, I think is ready to go to town council for a vote as well. So unless there's any further questions, I'd just be looking for a motion on the application.
Madam Chair, I think that this issue should go to the town council and let them decide. So I'm going to make a motion for a favorable recommendation on Town Council Order 24-034.
Thank you. We have a motion by Member McCamey. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Member Kent. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. All right. Thank you very much. Thank you, everyone, for coming out. Oh, sorry. Yeah, no, I just need a motion to close the public hearing.
Melissa, I meant to say the amendments by the chair to.
Oh, that's okay. Those are in there. Those are in the testimony.
A motion to close the public hearing by Member McCamey?
Yeah.
Do we have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Member McCamey, all those in favor, aye. Everyone, let's take a three-minute break. We'll come back, I don't know, at like 9:42. All right, everyone. I know it's getting late, but we do have quite a few other items to move through here. The next item on our agenda is the continued public hearing for 119 and 133 Common Street, Convergent Energy Solutions applicant. Yes?
Ken, Madam Chair, just quickly, I did reissue the staff report from months ago, July. That's in everyone's packet. And we did receive some public comments over the last couple weeks, which were also provided. And I also want to recognize our acting fire chief, Frederick Viola, is also here this evening. And as we had continued the hearing a couple times, because he does have some concerns about this proposal, we did spend some time looking at conditions and things like that, and just really understanding this is a step that then would enable Convergent to start to fine-tune things, in particular, different things beyond just the site planning exercise that the fire chief would be interested in as they relate to life and fire safety. So, he does have some comments here that I'll pass out when he does come up to the podium to speak. But the draft condition obtained as they were in July, we did receive some comments late today from Michael Kavanaugh. I'm not sure if Mr. Kavanaugh is here tonight. He's here. I heard he's here. We did receive some comments late today from Mr. Kavanaugh. Those are also in the packet, related to screening. They did come in fairly late. I did not have an opportunity to look at the plan in detail to determine whether or not those plantings would in fact work without impacting parking any further on the site. And I'm just trying to find them, so I can do that now. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. I guess with that, we'll hear from the applicant.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman, members of the planning board. Good evening. For the record, Attorney Barry R. Crimmins of 909 Washington Street in Stoughton here on behalf of the applicant, Convergent Energy. I won't introduce all the members of our team, but I'll just mention in case there are any questions. We have members here from Convergent. We have members here from Beld, who have been working with us on this project, as the board knows. We have representatives from the church, and we have our project engineer from Kim Lee Horn. I just want to briefly update the board on what has happened since we were last before you, which was actually on July 9th. We, at that time, had been continued to September, but then we got further continued at that time to tonight's meeting. Since that meeting on July 9th, there have been several significant events, not the least of which related to Melissa's comments. Representatives from Convergent had a meeting with both the mayor and with the fire chief to review our emergency response plan that had been discussed at some length at the prior meetings. And based on Melissa's comments, I understand the fire chief may have some additional comments that he wants to make. I mentioned previously, and I continue to maintain, that I think any issue relative to the emergency response plan, and any changes to the plan as it's currently constituted, could certainly be a condition of approval if the board were so inclined. And that condition would certainly be something that we would have no objection to, and I think, under the circumstances, would be appropriate. So that's relative to the emergency response plan. Secondly, last month, we had previously filed a notice of intent with the Conservation Commission, and on September 17th, the Conservation Commission issued an order of conditions for the project. So this is now the last step in this project. And I do just want to, and I'll mention one other thing, but I do just want to mention, relative to the permitting for this project, this is an application, as the board certainly knows, for site plan review. The use itself has been determined to be an allowed use as of right at this location. So what's before the board, and perhaps more for the edification of the audience, is not an application for a special permit for the use, it's an application for site plan review. Lastly, just last week, we had a community meeting at the church, St. Catherine's Greek Orthodox Church, where the proposed battery storage facility is proposed to be located. That meeting was well-attended. We had all of our project team present that evening. Many questions were asked, and I think, at least I would like to think, they were responded to appropriately. I think I could fairly characterize the nature of the comments, really came down to primarily two issues. One was why this location, and again, representatives from Beld were there to respond to that question. And secondly, the questions had to do with concerns about what if an incident happened with the battery storage facility. And once again, we feel confident that our emergency response plan, and that's not just a document that's meant to be filed and then nothing happens. Couple of the comments that came up at that meeting were, for instance, what about an evacuation plan? And we've indicated to the fire chief that we're more than happy to work with him and his department relative to an evacuation plan. In fact, we're willing to participate from a financial standpoint, in terms of signage or anything of that nature, that may be determined to be necessary. There were comments about what about notice to the residents in the event of an incident? And again, we're more than happy to work with the fire department. As well as on training, both in terms of training in general for the fire department relative to a battery storage facility, but also training relative to if they did have to respond to an incident. And again, I don't want to speak for the chief. He can address the board with his concerns. All I want to impress upon the board is the fact that, as I said, we're more than happy to continue to work with the mayor's office, with the fire department, with this board, with the building department, as we move forward towards getting our building permit for this facility. So with that, Madam Chairperson, we're happy to answer or respond to any questions that either the board or members of the public may have tonight. Thank you.
Director Santucci Rossi, I know you had mentioned the fire chief is here.
Yes.
Could we potentially hear from the fire chief? I know last time we continued it out with questions about a meeting that was going to happen between the applicant and the fire chief, and I would be curious to hear the fire chief's response on that.
Good evening, Frederick Viola, acting fire chief. Thanks for having me. I gave Melissa a document that outlines some of the concerns that I have. While I'm not here to speak for or against, I'm here, I'm charged with protecting the citizens and visitors to the town of Braintree, as well as my own members of my fire department. So my concerns are going to be based on that. One of the things that I have to say about this is that the fire service has not caught up to the technology yet of lithium ion battery and storage. The technology is way ahead of fire suppression. So, we're all racing against time to kind of catch up with that. So that indicates some of my concerns. But anyway, the proximity to the nearest home is one of my concerns. The proximity to the main church building. And when I think of these things, I don't think of small incidents. I don't think on, I think on the plane of catastrophic fire with people that need to be evacuated. I can't think small, I have to think big, that's what they pay me to do. So when I say these things, I'm thinking that on that plane, just to kind of give you relevance. In the event of a fire, the proposed evacuation route, Common Street, would be difficult to access, responding apparatus would be hindered, and outgoing evacuation vehicles would be hindered. The major highway above the site, depending on wind direction, we would have to talk about what we would do, who we would contact about shutting down the highway in something in a fire situation with a cloud of smoke. Concerns of water runoff, although we'd really never worry about runoff during a fire operation, it's usually after the fact, or when we're in the process of cooling down the situation. Proximity to the neighborhood, it is a densely populated neighborhood. UN guide, the Emergency Response Book, where lithium ion battery fire of, you know, we'll just say a railcar size, requires one-third of a mile in all directions, even for first responders. So I have concerns about that kind of stuff in this large fire situation. Air monitoring, we have the capability from the state Fire Marshal's Office for that. It's not a really bad concern for me right this second, but then, you know, in the plan, we're going to have to have those things, and maybe even the tools for that. So, with all of these, I'm open to the emergency response plan, I did review it. However, in my opinion, it needs to be tailor-made for us, and it needs to be multifaceted, and there needs to be multiple plans for multiple weather events, time of day, population, all those things. And I know that Convergent wants to work with us on that. As far as the training aspect, I would also hope that we could do both tabletop training, practical training, and long-term training. A lot of times, the companies will come in and they'll do training for one year, and then the next, within the next two or three years, we lose 10 people, and we lose that institutional knowledge too. So, all things we can work on. But I was asked to give you my concerns, and those are my concerns. And again, I think on the plane of worst-case scenario, to protect the citizens and visitors of Braintree, and then the members of the fire department as well. So I don't really have much more to say. If you have some questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Great, thank you. Remember McCollum, do you have any questions?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Chief. So, we have an existing battery system.
Yes, we do.
Are your personnel prepared to handle an accident there?
Yes, it's...
I know it's a little bit different.
No, it is. And you know, it's something, I should have said that in the beginning, the comparison between the two sites, because I did visit the site with Director Bottegi and his staff over at the Grove Street site. And the comparisons aren't really comparisons, because it's a little bit more remote than this particular site. So, that's the only one that I visited that compared to. But as far as that goes, yes, because in a catastrophic fire situation like this, the majority of the time, we're going to let this burn out. I know that sounds crazy, that's not what we usually do, but in these situations, right now, with the way that, what we know in the technology and everything else, that's going to be our best course of action for something like that.
You know, I had two questions, I think your attorney pointed it out.
Mm-hmm.
You know, why would Beld put it here? And then, secondly, the safety plan. So, when I look at your notes here, are you saying to us, I'm good to go if they fix the emergency plan? Or are you saying to us, let's wait a little longer?
I would like to work with them to come up with a better emergency plan that encompasses all things Braintree, and in that worst-case scenario, best-case scenario.
Got it, okay, so...
I mean, it's not, I don't mean to offend, it's not a document. It's not like he said, it's not a document that is just thrown down on the table and talked about. It is a, it's a guide, and now that guide needs to come and be my guide. And that's what I want to do, that's what I think we should do, that's what I would recommend as your fire chief.
Okay, so, do you, from your standpoint, do you think that's the last hurdle? If you come up with this robust plan and it looks okay?
Plus the other conditions that were mentioned by Director Santucci.
Yeah. We should ask Mr. Bottegi, but do you like this spot, or you don't like the spot near the church?
My opinion?
That's a loaded question.
Yeah, my opinion, I don't love it.
Yep.
But again, if we can build in safety measures, and we can build in evacuation plans, and we can build things that will keep my residents, which I call them, and my members of my department, safe, then I can't see why not. But all those things will have to be talked about, and I look forward to those discussions.
Right, okay, thank you, sir.
Does that suffice?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Remember, Chris?
Yeah, nationally, or looking beyond Braintree, have there been other situations where there's been failures that resulted in fires, and how did that pan out?
It's funny, not funny, but ironic, that it's a very, it is pretty safe. The United States has only had three incidents, I believe. Most of them are international, other countries, Seoul, Korea, Canada. There was one more recently, though, in Arizona. But in comparison, they are those, that's the thing that I'm looking at. I'm looking at that particular size of an event. There is fire suppression inside these containers, which is adequate for equipment fires and things, but I'm talking about when we get beyond that. And that's where I wanted to speak with them about the emergency response plan. That makes any sense to you?
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. Remember, Connolly?
Thank you, this is very helpful to us. I think there had been a lot of supposition of what the fire science behind this would be, and you being here and sharing these notes with us is helpful. My question would be, as my concerns overlap largely with yours, do you think a change of location would remedy most of those?
Yeah, from what I understand, and you have to excuse, I'm new in the position, so, but from what I understand, the last two years, they have exhausted many different sites, and that's what I've been told. So like I said, I don't love it, but in regard to the mandates that come down from the state, and the things that we have to adhere to, or Beld has to adhere to, and to keep the rates down for our people, this was the site chosen. So I wasn't involved in the site choosing. All I can do now is try to move forward and make it safe.
Thank you. You had said in your note that you planned for the worst-case scenario, so what would an understanding of a worst-case scenario be here?
Worst-case scenario would be a fire impingement on one of the, we'll call it a vessel, one of the, it sort of looks like a ConX box, if you can imagine in your brain. And if the fire suppression didn't work, and it extended into the battery, that's what I'm talking about, it would be a large fire that we would have to protect exposures and other things on sides of it, and just really just let it burn out. And it would probably, it could take hours, days, depends on what happens, so...
Thank you.
Thank you, and I agree, this is very helpful. So thank you for that. I don't have any specific questions.
And I am happy to work with Convergent and Beld, they've been good so far, I just, I'm new to the process, and as I went through it, I think, again, I think worst-case, I have to, that's what they pay me for, so...
Great, thank you, thank you very much. Another follow-up? All right, thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, and this is a public comment, so we'll have time for public to come up and ask questions and have comments, but I would say, just sort of an opinion of, one of the factors that we need to look at with the site plan is whether there's adequate public infrastructure, including fire. And I think if the fire chief is saying we need some more information on evacuation and other safety members, other safety mechanisms, then I would think that we would want to see that before moving too much forward. So I'll just say that now. And then, I'm going to open up to public comment.
My name is Jennifer Wadlin, and I live at 37 Parkside Circle. So I attended the meeting at the church, and I felt like this was sort of kept a little quiet, and was very concerned when I learned about this project. And the reality is this, this project could be on Wood Road, it could be in an industrial park, but it's all about the dollars and the cents, right? And a man stood up at the meeting, at the end of the meeting, and said, you know, we got to stop, we got to start choosing people over profits, right? So, and it's not our profits, we're not the profiteers, like, the profiteers are them, right? So, it would cost $300,000 to be on Wood Road, where they wouldn't be near a residential neighborhood, and it's costing them $4,000 to put it at the church per month. So it's not exactly people over profit, right? So, I also asked the question, would this stop, you know, our rates go down? And the response was, this really, this one facility would not have a significant impact, enough to bring any rates down. So, I thought, well, here we are, in District One, highest crime rate, now we've got ZOM, where neighborhoods are very concerned, and now here we go, Common Street. This woman said she's put right in between ZOM and this, this is where she lives. So, I think we need to think carefully about this. If one quick little Google search shows you that Convergent has had fires, fires that have burned for six days, you have a kid with asthma, can't play outside, you have a neighborhood lockdown, we've had enough neighborhood lockdowns with the Plaza that doesn't have any crime, according to Frank Marinelli. So I think that we need to think about a different location. I don't think a dense neighborhood, because the church is willing to offer a deal. And there is a question mark whether the zoning is really allowed, and another speaker will address that. And so, I just have concerns. So, I would ask you to deny this. Thank you.
Thank you, Board, for your service. My name's Kara Slattery, I live at 97 Parkside Avenue. I also was in attendance at the meeting the other evening. I did write a letter to the planning board, I'm going to kind of abbreviate what I said there, in addition to what I addressed at the meeting. I am concerned about Braintree's role in our clean energy future. I don't think, you know, this... I don't think, you know, this is the proper placement for a lithium battery energy storage system, again, in close proximity to a densely populated residential neighborhood, also in close proximity to, you know, the expressway, North and South. Should, I know when I was at the meeting, they said they don't plan on a fire, and yet, I don't think that was their plan in Warwick, because while they said there was, the fire chief mentioned that there was only, you know, three fires, that's Convergent. Convergent is developer and operator of three troubled New York projects. One system, coupled with a solar farm in Shawmont, New York, caught fire in July last year. The project relies on technology from GE. Two others in Warwick, New York, were built using technology from Oregon-based integrator Powin LLC. One of the Warwick projects also caught fire, another was experiencing problems, Convergent said in the June 29th statement. From my understanding, they're using another vendor for this storage system, so it seems that they're a contractor that just keeps having problems, and just slipping their vendors. They're working on, you know, finding out the solution of whatever caused the last fire, and building new AI systems to monitor and mitigate these situations. And I mentioned in the meeting that these storage systems have been widely, starting to be widely distributed in the United States, starting in 2016. So, we are still under a decade of having historical data and reporting on how they're used, the situations, the hazards that come along with them, and the new systems and technology in order to handle the hazards, and, you know, what I would consider disasters that come along with them. They, we also, things that I'd like to address, you know, by this specific company, being that they've had, you know, multiple situations in the past year or two, and, you know, they said it's law of averages, because they've installed so many systems, of course, there's going to be more situations, because they installed so many systems. Would we want a company that installed less and had a flawless record? Yes, more so. You know, I don't want Braintree to be the guinea pig of a new vendor, of a new system that is new to our neighborhood, new to my neighborhood. You know, then comes the funding situation. When we installed the one over by Grove Street, that was through the ACES program, it was grant funding. Then, Beld still had to contribute some of the funding to subsidize the rest of the project. They went around to the surrounding, you know, commercial properties, and offered reduced kilowatt per hour in exchange for being able to install that there, and that would generate about $250,000, I guess, reduced electric bill over the course of three years. So, the church is getting $4,000 rent check every month, you know? They were never offered this negotiation. And why wasn't this negotiation offered to other commercial properties in the area for a reduced, you know, lease rate on their properties that are away from a residential area? So, also, there are different types of containers now out there, ones that don't create, you know, hazard to the fire personnel when they go in to address a situation. And, you know, these are, the batteries are inside the storage container, so they create kind of like a backdraft situation. Now, over in the, you know, overseas, Germany, where they really are like further ahead in these types of units, they have the batteries on the outside, you know, so they can be addressed without having to go inside the unit, therefore not creating such an explosion. I was also told, you know, that these generate a lot of, oops, sorry. Lithium fires generate a lot of toxin hazards. Lithium-ion battery fires can release toxin gases that can be poisonous, combustible, or both. These gases can include hydrogen, hydrogen fluoride, hydrogen chloride, hydrogen cyanide, carbon monoxide, sulfur dioxide, and methane. Inhaling these gases can cause a variety of health issues, including skin burns, lung damage, depleted calcium and magnesium levels in tissues, and systematic effects. These gases can also pool at floor level due to their density, making them more dangerous in contained spaces like hallways. And another concern is that lithium salt electrolyte that can enter the air after an explosion. This can irritate the nose, throat, and skin and eyes, and can accumulate in the lungs, leading to pulmonary edema, I think, I'm sorry if I'm saying that wrong. Can also affect the heart, thyroid, and kidneys, and cause muscle control issues, headaches, and cognitive issues like infusion seizures and comas. Now, I was told, well, that's the type of toxins that are involved in any kind of house fire. Well, I don't think a house fire is allowed to burn for two days, six days, a couple weeks. These fires have to burn out, and these toxins are going to be in the air, in our neighborhoods, and affecting our community. So, in addition to not being, you know, a great place to install it, it's just not well researched, doesn't have a good history, and I don't, you know, it's just not healthy for our neighborhood, and I think it should be reconsidered and not have a, be pushed through. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Audrey Andronico. I live on Weston Avenue, and I just want to be clear, I'm, you know, I'm standing before you to say that this facility, despite a benefit of lithium-ion battery storage, I don't believe that it belongs in this neighborhood, and I don't believe it belongs in any neighborhood. I won't go into, I'm not going to reiterate what Kara has gone into about the hazards, I won't reiterate that, but, you know, I believe that this is an unacceptable danger for the neighborhood. When I did some research on this, I looked at the recent fires that have happened, and I'm going to reference one that was at a Convergent facility in Warwick, New York, which required residents, a school, and businesses within a half a mile to evacuate. So, in this location, if you're, you know, I plotted it out on the map, and that would, that whole radius would be from the Flaherty School all the way to Archbishop Williams, and not to mention, the highway would have to be shut down as well. I feel like this, as Kara and others have also mentioned, Jen mentioned as well, the, so, the supposed reduction in rates is negligible. So, this is a five-megawatt battery storage facility, five megawatts, as I've been told, and I feel, if I'm incorrect on this, somebody correct me, but five megawatts can basically support or power 700 homes for about two hours. So, that's not even, I don't think that's, it warrants putting people in danger for that. So, I feel like also an environmental impact, lithium-ion battery fires can also release these chemicals into the soil and the water supply. This could take, the environmental cleanup for that would be, could take weeks, years, and I think that it would leave lasting, a lasting impact on our community, in addition to, you know, people's health. It would put our whole ecosystem over there at risk as well. So, to be clear, I support Beld, I support clean energy, but I really do feel that more due diligence needs to be done as far as the location. I personally looked at maps of Braintree, and there's a lot of locations that could be used, namely, which was suggested to me by somebody else, was the, off of Plain Street, the cemetery, there's a huge area that's not near residences, that could be used as well. So, I'm not quite sure why we're focusing on St. Catherine's Church. And so, I urge you to make a negative recommendation for this. Thank you.
Hello again, members of the planning board. My name is Liz Page, I live at 137 Storzav. And I would like to start by asking a question, how is this an allowed use as of right? Can someone tell me what bylaw that falls under?
That's, I have the staff report here. It's Dr. Santucci Rosi, if you have it handy.
Yeah, I was just looking to see if it's in the front of the report. Let me just pull up the bylaw. Definitions, our bylaw, Braintree's bylaw, is the one we're looking at.
Oh, yeah, the definition of essential service is the of right definition they're operating under.
Okay, so, as I understand, the definition for essential services explicitly pertains to underground or overhead system maintenance. It intentionally excludes buildings necessary for the furnishing of services, by such services shall not be included. So, I think that there is some question as to whether or not, I think they're stretching this, to say that this is as of right. So, I would like to go, Melissa, I'm sorry, did you have something else to add?
No, I don't.
Okay, I'll just go on with my letter. I would like to ask you tonight to please deny this proposal for 119 and 133 Common Street. This proposal for a lithium battery storage facility is being considered in the very middle of a Residence B neighborhood. Now, this is not a normal use by right in Residence B, it is a densely populated residential neighborhood. Will there be other such proposals in Braintree's residential neighborhoods? If the answer is yes, then Braintree residents deserve to know this. If the answer is no, this is the only residential neighborhood that will be put at such risk, then I ask you, why are you destroying my neighborhood? Some may say that this proposal will be fine, that there is no need for concern, but we all know accidents do happen. I'm sure everybody in this room remembers we had a fire at Clean Harbors just a couple of years ago, and that was, in comparison to this, that was small. If we have a fire here, it will be huge. The risk is huge, and accidents do happen, and an accident at this such facility on Common Street would be devastating. I am asking you, our town officials, to look into your hearts, ask yourself these questions. Would you be comfortable to this proposal next door to your house? Would you be comfortable with this proposal across the street from your house? Would you buy a house near this facility? If there is an accident, will our health be impacted? If there is an accident, will our environment be damaged? If there is an accident, will our biggest investment, our homes, become worthless, because now this is in the middle of our neighborhood? These are important questions that you need to consider before you put a high-risk proposal in the middle of a residential neighborhood. This proposal does not belong in a residential neighborhood, not on Common Street, and not anywhere else. I ask you, with all respect, to please deny this proposal. Thank you.
Hello again. Justin Huang, 25, Lake Side Drive. First of all, I want to thank you, our acting fire chief, who put our resident safety as his major concern in catastrophic incidents. Last year, I visited La Halle, Hawaii. I saw through the scenes in person, it's much worse than what TV can describe. When it comes to Common Street, I'm asking if there's any study going to continue, would you continue to do study during the peak holiday traffic hour with high wind incidents? What happened? Can you picture? Nobody pictured what happened in Hawaii, but I can picture driving through Common Street during holidays, there's no place to go. It's where I'm here to asking our planning board to turn down these projects. And again, another thing we're talking about is the wind direction, where does it go? Blue Hill Reservation, the 300 acres of lands, the winds going to blow, and drive through there. So, it's not just the highway, it's the Blue Hill Reservation with 300 acres of greens, that wireless will be impacted as the worst condition as well. So, I'm asking the planning board to reveal this safety as our highest priority, and I do not want Lake Side Drive to turn to be the true dead-end G as Mr. Frank Marinelli said. Thank you.
Good evening. Michael Lang, 74, Cotton Ave. And I've sent in comments, forever, I sent some in this month also. As far as the fire chief goes, the assistant fire chief, I don't know where you get this information, because I've done a lot of research on this, and there's plenty of fires that were caused by lithium batteries. Lithium batteries are lithium batteries, whether they're in a box, or in the Greek church, or whether they're in the back of a truck. And on September 27th, there was a truck that tipped over outside the Port of Los Angeles, and it had one unit, one battery unit that caught fire. They had to shut down part of the port, they also had to, they had to shut off seven miles of the highway that runs beside it. Now, I heard people, including the fire chief, say that, well, yeah, we're going to have smoke for the highway beside it. One of the incidents I read about, the fire was going for six days, six days. This one, the one with the truck, that was two days, that burned for two days, which means, that means that the highway would be shut down. If you shut down Route 3, the Route 395 interchange, for half an hour, you're dead in the water, everything stops, the whole world ends, you know? So, you have to consider that. And by the way, these fumes that they present, they're called forever fumes. These are from a study I looked at, and it's forever, forever chemicals, excuse me, forever chemicals don't go away, and that would go into your water system, your groundwater and all the rest of it. I actually have the same book that the fire chief uses, and if you look at this, it's far more serious than, yeah, we'll have to make, this isn't the best area, it's not as safe as we'd like, but what the hell, we got to do it for Beld's sake. No, you don't. If you can't do it safely, you don't do it at all. Thank you.
Hi, Steve Chauschah, Hollis Ave. A long time ago, I was required to read a case study of the Space Shuttle Challenger disaster, where everybody sat around a table thinking, "This seems like a bad idea." And nobody did anything, and it was a really bad idea. I see the mayor's office saying, "This isn't us, this is Beld." And Beld is saying, "This isn't us, this is Convergent." The fact of the matter is, if I said the best place to put this was on the Beld site, because their parking lots are always empty, why not put it there? You'd probably say, "Are you crazy? Why would you put that next to a bunch of gas tanks?" To which I would say, "Then why would you put it next to somebody's house? You're talking about..." about tens of feet from somebody's house. That's not where this stuff belongs. The mayor's office should be holding public hearings about the process for site selection before anything moves forward. Look, this is not an issue where hundreds of houses are going to lose power for days if this doesn't go in. This is a minor cost saving, right? There's no rush to do this. There needs to be a site selection process that is transparent and open to the public. And if the mayor's office doesn't want to do it, the town council can do it by referring it to committee. The last thing I'll say is, I would, as a resident, really like to see every single town-owned property exhausted as an option first, because we keep talking about the town, how the town needs revenue. Well, this is a revenue generating process, right? Why not put it on a town-owned land and get that revenue for the town? Somebody mentioned Plain Street Cemetery area? Fine. Beld site, fine. The solar panels, the old landfill? It seems like there are so many sites, it's not enough to just say, well, we've looked at a bunch of sites and this is the right one. That process needs to be transparent. Thank you.
Gretchen Porter, Two Headland Ave. I have one question. I am the direct abutter to this proposal. Why wasn't I invited to the church for the meeting? Anne?
Sorry, I just, I know it's awkward, but I do need to have comments directed up here. We're not involved in the community process, so I unfortunately can't answer your question, but I...
It was not really for the board. I just wanted to get it out there. I don't have facts and figures. I'm going to throw out dangers and whatnot. I am simply going to beg you to not let this go through. My family has been on Headland Ave, those were my grandparents' Headland, for 120 years we've been there. Sort of. The state took a big chunk of it for the expressway. And we now have a big electric light box at the end of our street, which runs the lights on the expressway. And now you want to put in a battery storage facility that I'd be able to see right through the trees. I'm begging you, don't allow this. Thank you.
Hi, everybody. Thank you for staying this long. I'm Elizabeth Maglio. I live on Glen Rose Ave in East Braintree. I'm also the town councillor for District 3, East Braintree. The community meeting that was held last week was, I think, a wonderful opportunity to get to hear from some pretty impressive professionals. I think we heard particularly from two women who are, well, from Amanda and from a colleague, who were extremely forthcoming. It was a great exchange of information, and it was a good opportunity to be able to ask some questions about something that is pretty controversial. This conversation started two years ago, from what we can understand, is that there was an exhaustive search of various properties and that this has been taking place for quite some time. We've only just found out about it in the last couple of months, which I believe was my first time I got up here, which was in July. So I think part of the issue here is that, and in fact, the church hosted this meeting, and he got up and said that a lot of the questions that we had were questions that they had initially. And again, that was two years ago. I think that what this really suggests is that there wasn't, there isn't a long-term strategy about public health, clean energy, transparency, and public education as to how people can keep themselves safe. I've been sitting on the local emergency planning committee, actually, not sitting on it. I attend as an observer, as a guest. And for three years, as the East Braintree district councillor, I've been asking for an evacuation plan, because we have a little compressor station right across the water, the Embridge compressor station, sorry, sorry. And it's unprecedented to put a gas compressor station in the middle of a dense urban environment. And yet, there has been no comprehensive plan. There's no regional response. There's no coherent strategy as to how to keep yourself safe should there be a fire. We then had a fire at Clean Harbors. The hydrants didn't work. There was no water. The gate was locked. There were pictures of firefighters that didn't have ventilators. They weren't really being protected. The water pressure was too low. There was no alert. It showed that there just wasn't a state of preparedness from our various emergency sources, and there wasn't a game plan. So the fact that the fire chief is part of this process now is really important, really important, because I think that's part of what can help us get to a better place of safety. So what I would like to, I really knocked that over, huh? What I would like to get to is, I think that supporting a company who has been working on this for two years, I would love to see something happen, but I'd love it to be safe. I'd love it to be in a location that is not in the middle of a dense neighborhood. We know that the technology is out there. We do know that the, it is outpacing the capacity to fight fires. But we also know that we're part of a community, we're part of a town, we're part of a region, we're part of a state. And being able to have a comprehensive planning process with a detailed, as the chief mentioned, with a detailed emergency evacuation plan, I think, is the critical piece, and it's the part that everyone is having such a hard time with. It's not about Beld, it's not about Convergent, it's about the end result is a certain kind of risk that the community is taking on. And I think that we need to address these very difficult issues by not moving ahead with this until we have exhausted every other area that we can check. So thank you so much for sticking it out tonight. We really appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilwoman Maglio. Okay. Yes, at this time, I'll see if any members have any questions. Member McComme?
Since Mr. Botijji's here, maybe we can just ask him to refresh us as to why there are no other locations than this one. If I recall correctly, you told us something about, in this particular area, you know, you felt it was needed, but as other people have suggested, you know, why can't it go somewhere else? Safer, if you will?
Good evening. I'm Bill Botijji, general manager, Braintree Electric. Adam Chair, thanks for doing this. So we've been at this for a couple of years. We obviously didn't start looking for neighborhoods to cite this project. We looked at Wood Road, Forbes Road, Braintree Loffice Park, many areas that are more industrial in nature, where we can't put this project in the, off of Route 37 and Campanelli Drive, all those industrial parks up there, because they're already saturated with behind-the-meter distributed generation, which electrically doesn't work with our substation, the one on Mahar Highway, which feeds all those areas. We can't allow the electricity generated from the solar arrays up there and the engines we have up there to backfeed through the substation. It would disrupt the electric service to the town. That area also serves Plain Street, where this cemetery is that people mentioned. So can't really, you can't put them there. East Braintree is where Braintree Electric is, is probably the most congested area in town. There's nowhere in East Braintree. We tried the shipyard. The owner of the shipyard wasn't interested because there's not enough money in it for them. That's why we couldn't cite it on Wood Road, Forbes Road, Braintree Loffice Park. They were all looking for a lot of money because real estate's so valuable in Braintree. We happened on the church, St. Catherine's, had a conversation with them. They were willing to accept the $4,000 a month that was mentioned. So it works electrically and financially there. It has challenges, though. That's how we ended up there. Any land in Braintree, unless it's sort of surplus, is very valuable. We all know that. And this is sort of just a piece of surplus land the church has off the back of their parking lot. That's how we ended up there.
Thank you. Member Kent?
Is it possible, you know, to locate outside of Braintree? I'm thinking up, you know, on top of the old side of the Quincy Quaries or someplace else that's not particularly congested?
We have many projects, wind, solar, hydro, outside of the town of Braintree. We, this is, those are in front of the meter, it's called. That's where most of our energy comes from. This project works because it's behind the meter. It makes us look like we're using less electricity. It's an electric load reducer. That's why you want to cite it on one of your distribution circuits within the town.
And what is the shelf life of one of these units?
20 years.
20 years?
Yeah.
Okay.
And batteries are new, the technology's new. I understand the fire chief's concerns completely. It's just, we're under state mandate, like I think I said last July, to be 50% non-carbon emitting energy, call it green, by 2030, 75% by 2040, 100% by 2050. And the state of Massachusetts is heavily reliant on the offshore wind they're building and solar, and they're intermittent. They don't, sun doesn't shine all the time, wind doesn't blow all the time. So they're pushing batteries. There's very large battery systems being installed around the state, 250, 300 megawatt systems. This is a small one. It's what we can do in Braintree. The challenge is to cite.
Just one more, the, behind the, what used to be the dump?
Behind the meter.
The transfer station or, you know?
It's, everywhere you look, there's homes. We looked at the, we looked at town land, the DPW facility off the highway, there's some land back there. There's a neighborhood right behind it. Braintree's tough to cite anything in.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you. Member McComme?
Most of my questions were answered when you reviewed the mandate, which I appreciate. Are you limited to the lithium as the resource that you call upon, or are there others that you could call upon to meet that mandate and those timelines?
That's the current, I believe, I'm not a battery person, but I believe that's the current best technology available for batteries. There's all kinds of research, iron batteries and sodium batteries, but right now lithium is the answer.
And could this be met without calling upon battery resources, lithium or otherwise?
If you want to keep burning fossil fuels, very simple to meet it.
Thank you.
Or build nuclear power plants. Very simple to meet it.
Thank you. And I guess my question's for Convergent. I know when we were here last time, there was talk about having a more specific safety protocol, and the response was that that usually comes during the building permit application. And considering the fire chief's concerns, and I guess just a simple question, can we get a more thorough safety plan at this time that we can take a look at?
Yeah, since the July, hi, sorry, Amanda Henry with Convergent, for those of you who don't know. Since the July meeting, we did update the emergency response plan that we had previously submitted. So the first draft that we submitted was kind of the boilerplate version. After that meeting, we did send an updated site-specific version that included the type of equipment that we'd be using at this property, as well as more details on the citing of the project. We did say that this, that was still a draft. We didn't feel that it was the time to finalize it, because the citing of the project and the approval of the location is really a determinant on finalizing the details of that plan. So we did provide a more detailed plan. It is not intended to be the final plan. Our intent was to work with the fire chief and the associated personnel to finalize that before the construction permit.
All right, thank you. Director Sancho Giarazi, did we, did the planning department get that?
We only have one, and it, there's no data or anything on it, so I'm not sure. Actually, the date on the bottom is 6/20/24. That's the only one we received.
Okay, well, I apologize if we did not share that with you. And maybe, maybe it was sent just directly to the mayor and the fire chief, so I apologize for that.
Yeah, I think, from my perspective, I'd be looking to hear more comfort out of the fire chief as to the specific location, if you're able to get there in that conversation with the fire department.
Sure. One of the things I did also want to mention, from the comments that the chief had, was the fire department training. One of the things that we have offered is two sets of training. So one for, we would hire a third party to come in and train on battery energy technology in general, because we understand that the fire department doesn't feel adequately prepared to manage these fires. And we could have that as a Braintree-wide initiative, so we could have all of the fire departments attend that training. We would be willing to fund that. And then we would also do site-specific training with the local fire department, but also the adjacent fire department, since we know that oftentimes, like in an emergency, they call on other districts. So we're happy to provide those detailed, those detailed trainings on the battery systems, because we know they are a newer technology.
Thank you. And do you have any other questions, Member McComme?
I have one question. What if, what if the project was cut down in size by, let's say, a half or more than a half? Would that make a difference? You know, I know five megawatts is great, but, you know, it's going to, I understand what Beld's trying to do, but what if we cut, if we cut it in half, does it cut the risks down more? Or can it be redesigned somehow, or what?
You know, cutting the project in half would really just mean less of the containers that are there. I don't know that I think it cuts down on the risk at all, because it's still the same technology. All of the safety measures that are in the five-megawatt project would be in a two-and-a-half-megawatt project. So I don't know that it changes the risk profile of the project much. I mean, it's smaller, but I think that the resources needed to attend to a fire of a five-megawatt project versus a two-and-a-half-megawatt project are negligible. I think that it would be, it's not, I don't know that I think I see a significant advantage to that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Member Kent? Any more other questions?
Okay. If you, if there's a problem with one container, is that going to then automatically spread to the other containers, or is it, you know, sort of follow-up to that question?
Yeah, that's a, that's a good question. So one of the things we haven't talked about at the planning board meetings is like all of the specific measures that are with all of the specific measures that are within these containers. You know, one of the comments was that a lithium-ion battery is a lithium-ion battery. I would beg to disagree because these systems are much more sophisticated than, say, like a scooter battery. And they also perceive like continual maintenance like a scooter battery does not or, you know, a, maybe a charger that's in someone's home. So within the containers themselves, they're split into eight separate sections and each one of those sections has a firewall in between them. Within each one of those sections, there's a fire suppression system. It's an aerosol-based system. It's one of the only products on the market that has been proven to suppress a battery fire before it propagates. The fire that we have had was due to a manufacturing failure. There was a water infiltration problem with a cabinet and it caused an electrical fire, which then spread to one of the battery systems. When that fire occurred, it stayed within like a quarter of one of those cabinets and it did not propagate to the rest of the system. And that is by design. The, the firewalls are intended to prevent fire from spreading to other containers on the site, but also within the container itself. So the, the fire that we did have was contained within like a quarter of one of those units. There's fire suppression systems within each one of those units and also within the container themselves. So the intent is that they're also like spaced 10 feet apart from each other on the site plan and that is per NFPA guidelines so that the fire does not propagate across the battery containers.
So the fires that occurred in other locations, there was sort of a learning process there that those, whatever caused those incidents could or couldn't happen here?
So I, yes. Convergent has been around for 14 years. We have over a gigawatt of battery storage ongoing. We've had two incidents and unfortunately, they were both last year. We conducted a root cause analysis on both of those fires. The one system that was in Warwick was a system that was produced, manufactured by Powen Industries. They had a manufacturing defect in their container that allowed water to get in and cause an electrical fire. The other system was a GE product and we have not been able to reach a conclusion on the root cause analysis for that system, in part because we've been going back and forth with GE on the true root cause of, of the problem. We are not using Powen or GE on any projects moving forward. We are using products of other systems that we have had in place for years that we have not had issues with. I can't say for certain that we will never have a fire again. I think that would be unfair characteristic to, to tell you that. But safety is at the core of our business. Like, we obviously do not want to have a fire. Like, we want these batteries to be operating to make Bell money, to make us money, and to also just produce energy. We, we're not in the business of having a fire. So we do take a lot of safety precautions to make sure that this won't happen again. We, we certainly learn from our mistakes. We've had two. And we're, we're taking that and producing more robust emergency response plan, more robust safety measures and more robust checks throughout the construction process to ensure that we won't have a problem.
Okay. Thank you.
Member Conley?
I had a question for staff in terms of the zone of influence for the state highway. Have you had any feedback on what that might be and if the state has to weigh in on this project at all?
I'm sorry. Can you repeat the beginning part, Member Conley?
Yes. So the zone of influence for the highway?
Yes. That's 30 feet and I don't, I have to double check. They're at 30, they're just over 30 feet. So they're out of the zone.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. It's almost 11:00. We have a couple more applications we need to get to. So I think at this point, I, you know, my, my perspective, I'd be looking to continue and get a, a chance to take a look at the, the updated fire plan and have an opportunity for the fire chief to talk to Convergent again. I guess I'd be looking for some feedback from the applicant, whether continuing is something that you're agreeable with also.
I'm sorry, Madam Chairperson, we're just trying to determine the date. Was that, that the question, what date we're looking at?
Yeah, just, I, preliminarily, just make sure that we're on the same page, that continuing makes sense for the project.
Yeah, I think your next meeting would be November 12th, I believe.
Sounds about right. Okay, yes, so November 12th.
Right. So that would be fine if we get continued there. I think we could, I think that, and maybe this would be worth just a brief comment. I think the sense is, you know, you want us to sit down with the fire chief and, and sort of work out any questions or issues relative to that emergency response plan. I think that seems to be the main issue that need, that needs to be addressed.
Right, yeah.
So I think, I think November 12th would certainly give us plenty of time to do that.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I think there's, there's outstanding questions from the community and other members of the board as the location itself. But I, I don't see any way that we can move it forward unless the fire chief and fire department's on board with, with the proposal.
Right, exactly. I agree.
Okay. So I think with that, I'd be looking for a motion to continue to November 12th?
Still moved?
Motion by Member Conley. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Member Kent. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your patience and diligence. Appreciate it.
Thank you. All right. Next on our list is a, do I need a break? Short break? No. Okay. Next on our list is 49 Vindale Road, planning board file 2411. This is a new application, so if we could...
Let me get the notice. Give me one second, Madam Chair, sorry.
Yeah, do you want one right now? Okay. Yeah, if we could just do a, a quick break. It's 10:54, so 11 o'clock, we'll get rolling again. We were just starting off with the 49 Vindale Road. If we could have the legal notice read into the record?
Notice is given by the planning board under the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 48, Sections 9 and 11, and the Braintree zoning ordinance, Chapter 135, Articles 5, 6, 8, 11, and 12, that a public hearing will be conducted on Tuesday, October 8th at 7:15 PM in the Braintree Town Hall. The planning board will consider an application by Richard Horrigan for a special permit and site plan review. The applicant is proposing to demolish and construct a new single-family dwelling with associated utility, parking, and landscape improvements at 49 Vindale Road. Set property shown on assessors' plan 3040 is plot 46, contains 10,742 square feet of land within the Residence B zoning district and in the floodplain.
All right. Thank you.
All in favor? Oh, sorry. Sorry, Madam Chair.
Almost, almost there.
If we could hear from the applicant, please?
Certainly. My name is Jim Burke. I'm a civil engineer with the Selberg Sala Offices in Quincy, Massachusetts. I'm representing Richard Horrigan tonight. He's seated to my left and he owns a property at 49 Vindale Road, Resby, and in the floodplain district and we're looking for a special permit from you guys for that work. And what we have is a single-family house in a, in a bit of a rough condition. You can see that it sits in the floodplain. It's represented by the green line on the plan behind you. It's, has a detached garage and it just fronts on the Wayman-Four Rivers, right next to the Metropolitan Yacht Club and right down the street from Smith's Beach as well. Located in the floodplain, elevation 11. The house itself, it, it, it sits in the floodplain as it stands right now. It's 700, 717 square feet of house and about 307 square feet of garage. Topography slopes off from the front of Vindale Road towards the back to elevation 9 and then it breaks hard to the, from the top of slope to basically the rack line of the tidal area of Wayman-Four River. What we're proposing to do is raise that existing home and construct a, a home that's similar in size. Garage is gone, looking for just a, a parking space, a two-space driveway off of Vindale Road with a 960-square foot, footprint entirely located outside the, the floodplain now. As you can see, the, the green line as it's represented now. We bring in about 33 yards of fill that'll accomplish that, which, a couple of trailer loads and would take care of that. Existing utilities are disconnected right now. There's some, a significant amount of utility work going on Vindale Road as we speak and we'll be extending those utilities to the new house and that's pretty much the proposal. But there is a reduction in impervious area from one, from the existing proposal to the existing conditions to the new condition as proposed.
Great. Thank you. Member McComme, any questions?
Does staff have anything?
No.
Madam Chair, if I may, I put together some draft findings and conditions here. Very straightforward. I've been working with Mr. Horrigan for a while, just kind of going through some basic things. And he has also secured his approvals from the zoning board of appeals. This is an undersized lot and they are within the open space buffer, which is the yacht club. And they are also going to be going Thursday night to conservation for the notice of intent. So three boards, lots of reviews, want to keep this moving. Mr. Horrigan's helping his daughter with an investment here and the sooner they get the house on the lot, the sooner they can start paying a nice big mortgage. So no questions, no comments, very, very straightforward. Thank you.
Thank you. Member McComme?
My only comment is it looks like a pretty efficient design just given, you know, the lot size and everything, what you're trying to accomplish.
You'd have to thank the client for that. You know, it's a, you know, that's the house he picked and, and it fits well on the lot. And, you know, we'd look to maximize that.
Yeah, sure. Any risk of flooding?
Of course. It's, it's on the, it's on the river and it's tidal, but we're located completely outside the 100-year flood. The house itself, it meets all FEMA requirements with regards to construction. Finished floor, I believe, is at elevation 14, might be 14 and a half with the flood elevation being at 11.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Member Kent?
I drove by. This would be a vast improvement. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you. Member Conley?
I'd like to see it move forward as well. Thank you.
Thank you. And this is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience here on 49 Vindale Road? Yes, if you have any comments, just please come up and give your name and address. And appreciate you sticking with us. Apologies that it's after 11 o'clock.
I'm still awake. Tim Corain. I live directly across the street, 98 Inglewood Street. It's the corner lot of Inglewood and Vindale. Also...
of land within the Residence B zoning district and in the floodplain.
All right, thank you.
All in favor? Oh, sorry. Sorry, Madam Chair.
Almost there.
If we could hear from the applicant, please.
Certainly. My name is Jim Burke. I'm a civil engineer with the Selberg Sala Offices in Quincy, Massachusetts. I'm representing Richard Horrigan tonight. He's seated to my left, and he owns a property at 49 Vindale Road, Resby, and in the floodplain district, and we're looking for a special permit from you guys for that work. And what we have is a single-family house in a bit of a rough condition. You can see that it sits in the floodplain. It's represented by the green line on the plan behind you. It has a detached garage and just fronts on the Wayman-Fore Rivers, right next to the Metropolitan Yacht Club and right down the street from Smith's Beach as well. Located in the floodplain, elevation 11, the house itself sits in the floodplain as it stands right now. It's 717 square feet of house and about 307 square feet of garage. Topography slopes off from the front of Vindale Road towards the back to elevation 9, and then it breaks hard to the, from the top of slope to basically the rack line of the tidal area of Wayman-Fore River. What we're proposing to do is raise that existing home and construct a home that's similar in size. Garage is gone, looking for just a parking space, a two-space driveway off of Vindale Road with a 960-square foot footprint entirely located outside the floodplain now. As you can see, the green line as it's represented now. We bring in about 33 yards of fill that'll accomplish that, which a couple of trailer loads would take care of that. Existing utilities are disconnected right now. There's some significant amount of utility work going on Vindale Road as we speak, and we'll be extending those utilities to the new house, and that's pretty much the proposal. But there is a reduction in impervious area from one, from the existing proposal to the existing conditions to the new condition as proposed.
Great, thank you. Member McComme, any questions?
Does staff have anything?
No.
Madam Chair, if I may, I put together some draft findings and conditions here. Very straightforward. I've been working with Mr. Horrigan for a while, just kind of going through some basic things, and he has also secured his approvals from the Zoning Board of Appeals. This is an undersized lot, and they are within the open space buffer, which is the yacht club. And they are also going to be going Thursday night to conservation for the notice of intent. So, three boards, lots of reviews, want to keep this moving. Mr. Horrigan's helping his daughter with an investment here, and the sooner they get the house on the lot, the sooner they can start paying a nice big mortgage. So, no questions, no comments, very, very straightforward. Thank you.
Thank you. Member McComme?
My only comment is, it looks like a pretty efficient design, just given, you know, lot size and everything, what you're trying to accomplish.
You'd have to thank the client for that. You know, it's, you know, that's the house he picked, and it fits well on the lot.
Yeah, well, I mean, there's little houses down there, yeah, sure. Any risk of flooding?
Of course. It's on the, it's on the river, and it's tidal, but we're located completely outside the 100-year flood. The house itself, it meets all FEMA requirements with regards to construction. Finished floor, I believe, is at elevation 14, might be 14 and a half, with the flood elevation being at 11.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Member Kent?
I drove by. This would be a vast improvement. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you. Member Conley?
I'd like to see it move forward as well. Thank you.
Thank you. And this is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience here on 49 Vindale Road? Yes, if you have any comments, please come up, give your name and address. And appreciate you sticking with us. Apologies that it's after 11 o'clock.
I'm still awake. Tim Corain, I live directly across the street, 98 Inglewood Street. It's the corner lot of Inglewood and Vindale. Also, member and owner of Metropolitan Yacht Club as well. As far as Metropolitan Yacht Club goes, just a quick question, and could be probably answered as well. You brought up about so many yards of dirt being brought in.
Yes.
Now, was that to level off, level off the land or to raise it up?
That's about, say, six inches to, yes, push that elevation 11 back. If you look at the point.
Sorry, just to make sure Bill gets it also.
There's the 11 now.
Okay.
And then here's the 11 now. So, you're basically just bringing it up above the foot.
As far as the Metropolitan Yacht Club is concerned, and we've been dealing with, you know, a lot of these problems with the town of Braintree itself because of the beach and years of them dumping, dumping the sand there, is moving forward with this, with this project, they are, I've lived there for 26 years now, never seen that property being flooded out. So, as far as, you know, within the flood zone, they are perfectly safe. The only concern is, is the erosion that's in back of the property. And the problem that it's having is it's flowing down into the basin there, which is going to be causing a large expense to the yacht club itself, you know, as far as needing to dredge. That is going to be a concern, you know, and now I don't really know necessarily if this, you know, so much dirt to bring the elevation up is going to be a problem with that, with the erosion. As far as being the neighbor across the street, and I'm all for it, I mean, I know, you know, his, he's doing a great thing for his daughter. His daughter actually went to school, my son. You know, the only, you know, concern that I really have is really, like, you know, like I said, we've been there 26 years. I know the, the original owner of that house. He grew up in the house over 80 years. I took care of the guy, did a lot of his yard work for him. We have a beautiful view from our, from our porch, from our yard, just looking straight out. And there's nothing better than coming home after work, a long, hard day, sitting on the porch and relaxing and just letting everything go and just staring out to the water. I know it's the old saying, if you wanted a, you know, a house with a water view, you should have bought a house on the water. We had the opportunity to do that as long, as well as they did. They did it. And again, I'm all for them, you know, knocking down that old house. It's an old house. They're looking to build a, you know, a beautiful house on that property. It's going to raise value. It's going to raise value to the neighborhood. But with their raising value to them, it actually decreases value to not only myself, but the other neighbor behind us that is going to speak as well. That's a concern, and I'm not saying want to put a scabosh to this project, absolutely not. Almost looking for like a compromise. So, if you look at, you know, here, garage, and I don't know if it's a variance, if there's a setback, whether it's 20 feet from the property, from the side property yard where it's less, so if, let's just say if this is the, if this is the original garage, this whole area to the neighbor property on the side, that is just the beautiful view that we've had these years. We're going to lose. I don't know if maybe the driver could be to the other side or not. If we don't have a shot at it, then it is what it is. I wish for the best. I'm just, that's my concern with it. It's, it's what it's going to take away from us and decrease our value or take our value away after being braced with residents for, you know, 26 years and raising our kids in this town and stuff. So, it is a beautiful neighborhood. Welcome them to the neighborhood. But again, like I said, that's the concern I have, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Actually, I'm just going to pass around these photos. These are just images I took of our view from our house. You can kind of get an idea of what it looks like and what would be obstructed. As Tim was mentioning, oh, hi, I'm Chanda. I live at 84 Inglewood Street. Apologies. Yeah.
And just before we proceed also, can I interrupt and ask the applicant a question? I guess, would you be agreeable to continuing for a month to have the conversations with the neighbors offline, or would you rather we move to a vote tonight? I'm just thinking of the time and the direct connection with a couple of close neighbors.
Let's move to a vote tonight.
Okay, all right, so then, please proceed.
Okay, so it sounds like you have helped your daughter purchase this home, just as my parents, fellow millennial, had the assistance of my own parents helping me purchase my home that I did three years ago. I love the view. Like Tim said, it is beautiful coming home to the water, and I've passed along those photos to kind of showcase what we get to come home to in this current time. When the leaves are off the trees, it really is a beautiful, even prettier than it is right now. My biggest concern is the location. I see that this is a two-plot land, and so it does absolutely make sense that you want to center it on this plot that you have. You have two plots. The original house and what we invested in, I've always been told to protect my investment, and this does conflict with that. As their value goes up, mine would go down. And so, because of this, our, our view would absolutely be obstructed, and while it's small anyway, I just really don't want it to be obstructed even further based on this. I love the idea of the house. I love the look of it. I appreciate the mindfulness and the approach of it. I'm excited to have new neighbors as well and hope that everything does work out. I just would love for them to reconsider, especially with the parking lot down at the bottom. If it is just two cars, they can absolutely make it tandem parking. That's what mine is. It can just be front and back. It doesn't need as much space. That would allow the house to be shifted over a little more to the right. I understand that they're also removing some trees, and those could also be put on the other side of the yard on the left side too, rather than the right side or further down. And so, I just would like that to be taken under consideration, given the fact that we invested in this property because of its views as well as the house itself, and it is a concern to us that this is going to be built in the location that it is. We absolutely want it to be built, just shifted further over to the right. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Do we have any questions? Additional questions from?
Can I add?
Of, of course, just state your name and address, just so the record's clear.
Hi, my name is Rich Horrigan, 216 Elmer Street in Braintree. First of all, thank you for the feedback. I really appreciate that, and I don't disagree with you at all. The reason why we chose the position of the house is the street coming down, if we moved it more to the right, the lights from the cars would shine right into the house, right into the bedroom, and that's why we kind of wanted it a little bit more centered to the, on the lot. It wasn't any other reason but for that reason. The lights coming down the street come right into the house. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Any other members of the public? Okay. All right. So, Member McComme, do you have any additional questions or comments?
No.
Member Kent? Member Conley?
No, thank you.
All right. I don't either. I do appreciate the design. It's a, it's a one-story with a little bit of a bump out on the top, but not very tall, actually, I believe shorter than the pool house that was approved not that long ago, right on somebody's fence, after some reductions. So, I do appreciate the concerns with the view, and I can understand how that's, could be problematic. But I think as far as our bylaw is concerned, that the application does meet, from my perspective, what we're looking at with it. The erosion, any erosion concerns appear to me to be something that can be taken up during the Conservation Commission process also. So, I, I don't have any issue voting on it tonight if we have a motion.
So move.
And Member Kent, is your motion to approve per the staff report dated?
A second it.
Yep, okay, and we have, so we have a motion by Member Kent, a second by Member Conley. All those in favor?
Aye.
Impose? All right, thank you.
Please.
Okay. All right, and we have, next up is another new application, 193 Rear Grove Street, also known as 175 Grove Street. Oh, yeah, thank you. No. The correspondence list, okay, all right. So, just real quickly, we're going to have a motion to enter the correspondence list into the record. Motion by Member Conley, a second by Member Kent. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to close the public hearing on 49 Vindale by?
So move.
Member Kent, and a second by?
Second.
Member McComme, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so now, we're moving over to 193 Rear Grove Street. Yes, if you could read the, the public, the legal notice, please.
The planning board, under the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 48, Sections 9 and 11, and the Braintree Zoning Ordinance, Chapter 135, Articles 1, 5, 6, 7, 8, 11, and 14, that a public hearing will be conducted on Tuesday, October 8th, 2024, at 7:15 p.m. in Braintree Town Hall. The planning board will consider an application for major modification of special permit site plan review decision number 96-12 filed by Thomas C. LaValle, Alliance Health at Braintree. The applicant's project involves constructing additional parking to the rear of the property. The project also involves improvements to the site's landscaping, lighting, stormwater management system, along with associated grading. The property is located at 193 Rear Grove Street, also known as 175 Grove Street. It's Zone Residence B, shown on Braintree Assessor's Map, 1105, as plot 85, with a land area of 300,562 square feet or 6.9 acres.
I'm going to interrupt the applicant, but I will note, I know there's people in the audience for this application. I know our staff report does recommend a continuance, so just considering the time, I will note that I do expect it'll get continued with an opportunity to speak at the next meeting also. But that being said, I'm, I know you've been here and it's late, so.
Yeah, we, we would still like to present. My name's Rob Grady. I'm the administrator for this facility. Tom LaValle was unable to be here this evening. You know, this is a, a project that we had scheduled in 2019, 2020, because there were immediate needs at the facility, and then the pandemic hit and kind of slowed things down. We're in the midst of a $5 million renovation to the facility, which includes the parking that we're here for tonight. And what, what's made this more urgent is just with the history of the property. So, Alliance Healthcare is a 101 nursing, 101-bed nursing facility on the same campus as Logan Park. They had common ownership when they were built about 28 years ago, 1996, I believe. The property pre-existed Hannah Niles Drive, the abutters, many of whom are in attendance this evening. My understanding was when Hannah Niles was developed, the Logan Park family didn't object to the forest being taken down and all that greenery being lost for the development of those houses. Our property is situated on 6.9 acres of land, and well over half of that property is wetlands and buffer zone and non-buildable properties, of which Evergreen kind of sits on. So certainly, you know, the homeowners that bought those properties understood that they would have that greenery surrounding them, not the case with the folks at Hannah Niles When we were under common ownership, when we were originally built, Logan Park was independent living senior housing. Many of those residents did not have cars, and the nursing home, which has 52 parking spaces and always has, staff had parking available down on the lower parking lot, which is comprised of, I believe it's 81 parking spaces. Years later, I want to say early 2000s, there was a foreclosure, a bankruptcy or whatever, receivership of the state, and the two properties separated. There was a good understanding from the folks that owned the nursing home that to survive, they needed to lease spaces from the, from Logan Park. So, there was an agreement to lease 17 spaces, and that agreement existed up until, I want to say, two years ago. I've been at the facility two and a half years. They approached me six months in and wanted their spaces back, or as many as we could afford to give up, and I had to give them something, so we gave up four spaces. So, we presently lease 13 spaces down in the lower lot. And over the last four or five months, they have approached us time and time again, wanting to end the lease, and we're at their mercy. They could just provide a 30-day notice to eliminate those 13 spaces, which would be crippling to the facility. My main concern as an administrator of the facility, I've been an administrator for 20-some-odd years in the industry for 35, I've seen many facilities operationally, from the Cape to the Berkshias in Boston as well. This facility is space-challenged, not just inside the facility with office space and storage, but also parking. By far, out of all the facilities I've been a part of, this one concerns me the most. And it's not just how it impacts families and visitors to facilities. I lived through the pandemic, working in the facilities. It was hard to see the impact of those families when we were locked, when we locked people out from facilities. And the fact that oftentimes, people can't make visits to the facilities is bothersome to me, and it's bothersome to many of the families, some of which had to leave because they couldn't make the late hour, but we kind of wanted to forge ahead, because as I mentioned, this is something that we've been working at, trying to get before you for a few months now. And yesterday was the first time I saw this staff report that came in with some issues, and I understand, you know, we were asked to kind of maybe table this, but I thought it was important to at least get a little bit of a hearing tonight. There are some, just a couple of things going through the staff report with a trailer. It's a storage trailer. When I first got on the property, our library was filled with PPE equipment and infringing on residents' common space, and I felt it necessary to get a trailer. I've done it in other communities. Wasn't aware that Braintree required a permit typically when they're not affixed or not powered, you can put a temporary trailer there, so we did that. That trailer is going to be removed pending this parking lot, as we kind of put in our application that, that trailer's in actually the parking lot area, so that would have been removed. There were some pictures of the lower lot of the leased spaces, where there are, I think, four out of five pictures, five spaces pictured that were empty. I can only guess that the photo was taken at 3:30 because I know whose cars park in those spaces. I constantly kind of monitor that area, but people do call out sick, people do leave at 3:00, and I'm thinking this picture was probably at 3:30, quarter to 4:00, because I know who leaves and who doesn't at those times. So, those kind of anecdotal representations that are in the staff report aren't truly an accurate kind of representation of what happens day-to-day there. I think there was a pallet up against the building. We get supplies in on a daily basis, so pallets do come and go, but they don't linger. There was a dumpster. Again, I explained to Connor a little bit earlier that I wasn't aware a cardboard container needs a separate enclosure, but I can work that. but I can work that out with the contractor to remedy those kind of things. I think the more important items beyond the staff report were that we did have a neighborhood meeting pre-pandemic, back in 2020, early 2019, and the neighbors had brought concerns. They were heard, and they were addressed. And again, we had another neighborhood meeting just more recently, and we reviewed those alterations, effectively, I believe. Here with me today is Chi Man from Hardy &amp; Mann Civil Engineering, who put our plan together. Again, there's not a lot of buildable property to do, but what he's designed is within proper offsets. He provided some tree replacement along a privacy fence, lowered lighting. He can speak more directly to it. But, you know, when we heard out neighbors' concerns, I think there was, there's got to be shuttle, shuttle staff from off-site somehow, maybe the church across the street. Those are kind of, you know, not realistic solutions. Nursing homes are not easily, easy to staff. Not, a lot of people want to work in nursing homes these days. We, I'm sure you can imagine how it is to try to staff a facility and to expect staff to drive to a parking lot, wait for a shuttle, and the weather, and walking distance, and that kind of thing. It's tough enough just walking up the hill from Logan Park for some of the management staff during poor winter conditions and whatnot, is kind of burdensome. The other suggestions, where there's plenty of other areas around the property that are greenscape right now, that could possibly change into parking spaces or landscape. There's a split rail fence where there's a fence of, a split rail fence with cars parked along the perimeter that have, that's really kind of in violation. They're basically illegal parkers. And that is the greenscape. The plan also kind of, or the staffing report, kind of criticized the facility for not maintaining the original landscape design, where there were probably rhododendrum shrubs in some of the grassed areas. Well, those had to go away because we had to park illegally, because we had nowhere else to park. And again, my bigger concern beyond even families and visitations is 911 traffic and fire engines getting in and around the building, because sometimes people are even double parking out beyond the outer skirts of the curvings and different fire lanes. So it's truly a life safety issue. I'd like to introduce Chi to come up and just kind of speak specifically to the site plan and the accommodations we tried to make to the neighbors and the abutters. Thank you.
Good evening, members of the boards. I'm going to try to make it quick. So, back in 2019, we met with the neighbors. We heard a number of concern, screening, stormwater. Those are the two big concern that we have. Again, on the site plan here, what we show is the entire facility. As you can see that, the existing building is shown on the site plan, and the existing parking lot is right here. This is our proposed expansion, parking expansion area. And the rest of the site, I would say more than three-quarters of the site is going to be remain open space, even with this parking expansion. The parking lot itself is going to be 25 spaces, the new parking lot, but we will be taking out five spaces from the existing lot to make access into the parking itself. So then, there'll be, so with the 13 spaces that's going to be returning to Logan Park, the proposed parking, the total increase is going to be seven. And under this proposal, there's going to be no bed increase or capacity increase in this facility at all. It's really just sustain, make it more sustainable for the current operations that's mentioned with the Mr. Brady. We look at other options, like off-site parking, other leased parking, but I think that's not the long-term solution, because just like the Logan Park, we have leased parking, it's going to end anytime. It can be terminated anytime, and we do have the land, billable land on our own properties. We would like to build that parking lot as a long-term basis. This go to the layout plan, it's a blow-up of the area. So the parking lot is going to be accessed through the existing parking lot. We are going to take away five spaces and build two islands on either side to create the drive aisle. It's going to be working with the existing contours. There's a little dip in the land area. So basically, we are going to be constructing a retaining wall. The wall height is varied from zero to the highest point is like seven feet. It's going to meet the existing gray at the end of the parking lot. So our design, you know, we heard from some of the neighbor concern from the last three years. There is a lot of concern about screening. So this latest plan, what we are going to do is create a retaining wall, and we are going to put an eight-foot fence on top of the wall to totally screen the parking lot from the neighbor. Our parking lot lighting is going to be limited at eight feet, so the parking lot lighting is going to totally screen from the proposed fence. On the base of the wall, where the existing landscape area, we are going to be planting about 40 new trees. We did, I did, I did walk the site in total count. I think we are going to be removing about 14 trees to make the construction of this parking lot, so it's going to be a negative, a net gain of the landscaping. And these are going to be evergreen trees, we stack around, so the idea is to soften the proposed retaining wall. At this tree growth over the years, this will grow more than like 12, 15 feet. So it's going to eventually grow to screen out the fence itself, too. As far as drainage goes, this project is actually going to be reduced runoff that draining directly to our abutting properties. Currently, although it's a wooded area, it's shaped like a valley, so the runoff drain directly into our abutting 71 Hennessy Now Way. With the new parking lot, it's going to be curved all the way around, so the new paved area is going to be, any runoff coming down the hill here is going to be all intersected by the parking lot. We are going to have a transtrain to capture all the runoff that's coming from the hill as well as the new paved area. And we are going to be constructing an underground cotech system on the side of the existing parking lot. That's going to be totally underground with retentions. We did test pit three years ago. The soil material we find out from the site is almost like beach sand. It's really highly permeable. So we sized the system to retain, to reduce all the runoff that is going to be going towards our neighboring properties. Three years ago, I just want to go back that we was proposing a rain garden, but we heard from our neighbor about, you know, stormwater concern that spilled over into their property. So on the new design, we are doing an underground retention system. We did read the staff report. We understand that there are some, there are some violations from the original special permit, such as landscaping. We understand that some of, over the years, some of the print was dead, and it wasn't properly reprinted, so we'll be working with the staff for the next week or so to sit down and go over the new landscape plan. We are, we are going to be agreed to reprint the entire site back to the original special permit conditions, or any other suggestion the staff will have for us. I think, as far as the main, the site maintenance goes, I think Mr. Brady, Grady has been taking very good care of it, and he's been meeting, even meeting some of the neighbors, addressing some issues. There are times, you know, there would be some, like the pallet that was left on the site, but again, there was an operational issue that can be addressed. And there are some landscaping suggestions. We'll be more than happy to sit down with the staff to go over maybe some design changes or so that can provide more screening. So we understand that, you know, staff recommender continues the hearing, so we'd like to present the projects, to hear any comments or concern that a board member has, that we can take the opportunity to address it in the next couple weeks. And there is a comment about the validation of the parking study. We don't have a full traffic study, because we are not adding capacity to the site. We would be asking for wafer for full park traffic study, but we did hire Jack Gill, and he is a traffic engineer who provides a parking study. He did the site observations. I think there's concern about the one-day survey of the site, but I can have Jack talk about that. But basically, a healthcare nursing facility is not working like a retail or office space. So basically, the visitations and staff member working is pretty consistent every day. So, and you can compare to other facility as well. I think the parking study is really valid. And again, the concern about, you know, I mentioned the staff, or some residents show that they are, when they visit the site, there's always empty space. There are certain peak hours, especially the changing of shift, that there's no spaces in the visiting hours. And like the nighttime, I understand that there are some concern about who is going to park here. We had a committee meeting, meeting at 6 o'clock, there's plenty of parking. So the night shift, everybody parked near the building front entrance, and can speak to that. The new parking area, basically, I think, you know, is going to be very rarely used at night, so I don't think there's a concern about light trespassing into the neighboring properties as such. If I can have Jack to talk about the traffic, the parking study.
Thank you, Chi. My name's Jack Gill, and the official name is John Gill. Anyways, I had done a traffic, a parking survey, every 15 minutes, every parking space up there, both the Logan and the Alliance lot. And then I also checked some of that data against the staff demand. In other words, what was their shift, how many people were there with administration, whether healthcare, whether, so, put the two graphs together. And I'm just, I'm not going to read this whole thing to you tonight. I'm just going to give it out to you, and then I'll get, these are just a highlight of what I'm going to be telling you, but I'm not going to spend all night doing that because you've got people behind me. Anyways, yeah, well, the first couple lines are just that, it says that, "I am a registered professional engineer in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts," and that I started off, I was a traffic engineer and director for the Town of Brookline, City of Quincy, City of Boston, and that I'm also consulting traffic engineer for North Park County, and a member of the Wingland Parking Council, and past president of ITE. I'm old, that's all that says. Anyways, so I did conduct the traffic, the parking survey at the site, and it was done in conformance with the ITE Manual of Transportation Engineering Studies and the Traffic Engineering Handbook. I'm just going to go reading through the first page and not everything else there. I also prepared a follow-up assessment based on the Alliance Healthcare, Braintree actual staffing, and the use of data, including administrative, professional, healthcare, employees, vendors, recreational personnel, and maintenance personnel, as well as business to the site. And then I did, I'm also attached in this package here is a preliminary response to the staff report, number one, dated October 3rd. I did this on October 5th, two days later, so I'm not going to read the whole thing to you, but it tries to respond to the staff comments, just so you're aware that I tried to get that all out there. Well, the parking survey itself, Sheldon Lance Parking was 94% occupied at 8 o'clock in the morning, remained at capacity throughout the day, and it reached a maximum peak of 133%. And that, that shows that there were people illegally parked on the lawns and on the aisles and stuff like that. So that's why it's over 100%, because there were more cars than there were spaces. So there was 133% occupied at noon time. And at the conclusion of the parking survey, showed approximately 25 new parking spaces were needed. And then after that, when we reviewed the visiting and the staffing data, to see how well the theoretical parking demands are correlated with the observed demand. And on August 29th, I had a memorandum that revealed 65 spaces would be needed at 2:30 in the afternoon, but 75 spaces may be needed at 3:00 PM overall. And then I just showed you the two graphs, one for the parking supply that I had done by every 15 minutes, was the space occupied or not, and then also by looking at the other memo, I think you had both memos. One was July, and the other one was August. And then I did start to respond to the staff comments, but that's all included in here. The bottom line is that they don't have enough parking right now. And if they lose those 13 spaces down below because Logan Park wants them back again, and I'm not going to get into the reasons of that, I couldn't hear Rob completely, but it's my understanding that they're trying to provide spaces for their residents, because people want vehicles assigned to them, and they're competing with other assisted care places throughout the town as well. So there definitely is a shortage of parking, and I'm trying to show you that. I did it in conformance with the ITE manuals. I have a lot of experience, started in 1970, I actually didn't, I started before that. I was working out of engineers back in '66, no nuclear power plants, and that parking was easier, so I went into that. Anyways, I'm going to be here, I do have both of those reports, and if there are more in-depth questions, I can get into that. But looking at the time and the people behind me, I'm going to sit down. Thank you.
So we have that. It is a public meeting, so we can accept comment. I know a lot of you have been waiting a long time. We'll say that we do have quite a few letters that have been provided to us, and we have read those, and will read those. We understand some of the concerns about the proximity of the parking lot, and the lighting, and the wall, and the fence. If you'd like to speak, come up, give your name and address, and we can take that into consideration.
What to understand, that, you know, we have been relaying this message about the site to them for a long, long time. And Connor and I have been going out to this property periodically over the last five years, and it's cleaned up a little bit, and then right back to the, and frankly, we have met with these neighbors now multiple times over the course of the last five years, and it's the same issues over and over again. So it's very concerning to us when we raise these types of things five years ago with Mr. Lavalley, who I know isn't here this evening, and it's just the same stuff over and over and over again. I just, I, I hope that, well, I don't mean to interrupt into Connor's review here, but I felt that the board should understand that.
Yeah, and I, I could see-
Very, very concerning from our-
Some of that in the staff report, and likely some of the-
All right, all right, it's, it's almost midnight, we have a whole other application
to go. I'm going to let-
The name was said-
I'm sorry, we can't pick it up if you're standing there, I should have. Let's let him speak, we'll let you speak. I understand there's trailers, there's expansion, people are frustrated, and I do expect this to get continued, so I, I'm not trying to discount any concerns, just trying to pick up-
No, I just have one comment. The people that probably are-
Oh, sorry, yes, thank you. Yeah, name and address, just for the record.
Oh, my name is Mary, I, I work at Alliance, I've been there ten years. And the people that are here tonight, I've seen at Alliance visiting their parents in, in the past, and never complained about anything before, but now that their parents are gone, they're complaining about parking. We need more parking. I'm staff, and I have trouble finding a spot. There's just not enough parking.
Thank you.
Richard, thanks, thanks everybody for being here. Richard Ryan, Seventy-One Hannah Niles Way. I also wrote a letter that was put in dated September thirtieth. I'm the direct butter to this project, and it's very upsetting to have this project be going on, and Alliance saying that they're good neighbors, because they, they absolutely are not. You know, the, the, the trailers are a perfect example of that. They've gone through this process previously, and you can even see it on the plan. They show the trailers on the, the previous trailers on the plan, one of which was an office for somebody who stayed there. And the second they got rid of the, rid of the trailers from the previous, when they were going to look for, for the previous submission, they brought another trailer in. Now they're, now they're talking about getting rid of that trailer. So they did nothing from the previous time when, when we had, when we had our meetings. They did absolutely nothing to address our issues. In looking at the plan, they have this retaining wall. As they said, it's seven feet high with an eight-foot fence on top of it. That's basically to that blue line of paint right there. And it, the wall is about hundred, over a hundred feet long, it's a hundred and fourteen feet, I believe. About sixty feet of that is the six, seven-foot length of wall, that's that high. And that's what I'm going to be looking at, that's what's abutting me directly, only ten feet away from me. I mean, how, how oppressive is that? There, there's, in terms of the traffic study, you know, that's, it's basically a joke. You know, a one-day observation is not a study. That is not a study of, of what's going on in, on the parking lot. There also, you know, I look at the study, and they have a section that is showing parking along the fire lane. Do you park in the fire lane? Do you guys have parking in the fire lane? You ever see parking in the fire lane? And, and is that considered to be parking? We have people here, like, like was just mentioned, that, that have, have had people stay at Alliance, and they've all, you know, have stayed there and have parked there, and they've never had an issue, or at least from what I've been told, they have not had an issue parking. So, you know, and we've consistently gone over and looked at the parking issues, and we consistently see parking available. Now, Alliance has also consistently had construction going on, they have construction vehicles, they have construction trailers in, in the, in the parking area, taking up parking spaces, not to mention contractors that are coming and parking there. So this is all going on too, as well. So, you know, I mean, the, the other thing too is, in terms of the reasoning for this project, it's, it's been nothing but hearsay. You know, the, the original, the original reasoning for the project was because their employees didn't want to walk up the hill from the original spots that they had down, down below at the Logan, at, at the Logan parking spots. So their reasoning for the, for the, for the parking, for the new parking was that they didn't, their employees, they didn't want their employees to walk up the hill. Now it's a different reasoning. So what, what is the real reason for the parking spaces? And when asked, asked why the twenty-five spaces, and, and why, where did they come up with that number, it was, the answer was, at the meeting on, on the site, was because that's what fit. There's no real reasoning behind the number of spaces that's required. So I just ask that, you know, in closing, that you consider all this, and you, you move them away from our property. You, you consider that, you know, moving them away from the property, and, and looking at alternate parking on-site, alternative parking on-site. We, we met with Melissa and Connor, and we came up with some alternative parking, and I, I highly, you know, would like you to consider those, those options. Thank you.
All right, but I, I do think we're going to continue this, so I'm going to have these last two, and then I'm, I'm just going to be looking for a continuance, and I'm, I'm really apologize for the people who came out. If there's, if there's somebody else that feels like there's something they really need to convey tonight, I don't, I don't want to cut you off, I know you've hung with us this whole time also, but we, we do also have a whole other application to try to get to, so I'll just reiterate. If you feel like there's something you want to convey tonight before we hear this again, just please try to keep it as quick as possible, and I apologize for that, thank you. Go ahead.
My name is Sandra Blackman. My mother is at Alliance, she's been there for three years. I've had complication trying to park. A couple of times, I had to just drop off her food, and I couldn't go upstairs because there was nowhere to park. And it's hard, if your mother, or if you have a resident in Alliance, you would look at the parking differently. If you don't have anyone there, then I can understand you saying there's no parking issue. I've seen there's been parking issues. I go there two to three times a week. On the weekday and the weekends, I've had issues trying to park. I myself have parked in the fire lane, just because I had to run in real quick, go to the front desk, leave my mother's food, and leave. And it's, it's hard enough that I got to go up there often to see my mom, she depends on seeing me. My mother's ninety-five, thank God, and I just want you to know parking is an issue. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Jim Fitzgerald, I live at One-O-One Hannah Niles Way, excuse me. I'm a lifelong resident of Braintree, I live, again, on Hannah Niles Way. I've had two family members staying at Alliance, and for about a duration of five years in total, I have not had a problem parking at Alliance. Yes, it is crowded, and yes, there is parking taking place on the shoulders, but never once did I not find a spot. So I've had a very different experience than what is being reported here. I do disagree with some of the statements in the permit application. For instance, the statement having to do with that the proposed parking lot is in harmony with the adjacent properties. Clearing a forest, building a parking lot within ten feet of a property line, eliminating the mature trees, excuse me, really, in a, in a neighborhood called Braintree Woods, really is not in harmony with, with our neighborhood. So as a civil engineer, I've reviewed the plans, and I really support the ideas that were presented in the planning department's document, including finding alternative parking spaces surrounding the existing parking lot. Really making better use of the space, more efficient use of the space would be a, a great opportunity to, to gain parking. There's probably about eleven or twelve spaces at least that could be gained surrounding the parking lot, making better use of some of the existing pavement. We're not talking about spaces that are currently landscaped, these are spaces that might have grass, or even worn-out grassed areas that are now just dirt, but really would, these are not spaces that are being used by the residents for gathering, or recreation, or being enjoyed at all. It's just formalizing parking, making better use of the space. So if there are eleven or twelve spaces, let's just say, that could be used surrounding the parking lot, and the goal is to achieve twenty new spaces, then we'd be talking about, if a parking lot was necessary at all, a much smaller parking lot. And with that smaller parking lot would be to shift it away from the, the neighbors, you know, our, our yards are not that huge, and so a ten-foot buffer, a ten-foot clearance from the rear property line is really not much. So trying to achieve much more of a buffer to try to retain some of those mature trees would be very important, certainly to the neighborhoods and to Braintree Woods, to retain that tree line. Also, with a smaller parking lot, there wouldn't be a need to fight the topography that's out there today. So right now, the, there's a great slope from the existing parking lot through the proposed parking lot area, so the proposed parking lot would require a significant amount of fill. With a smaller parking lot, you wouldn't be fighting that slope, the parking lot could be much lower, and so now you wouldn't have that seven-foot retaining wall with the eight-foot fence on top of that. You'd be able to lower it, lower it significantly, maybe even to grade without any wall. And, and certainly, screening is, is definitely necessary. Right now, the plan is showing for, I think it's Canadian use, they're not thirty-four trees, they're bushes. So we really need some more substantial screening that is at a bigger scale than a, than a shrub. And lastly, I really truly hope that those trailers go away, and that with whatever is ultimately done, that it just doesn't end up, more clearing takes place to relocate those trailers, and they come back yet again. So that, that's my, those are my comments, and I appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, I can't make it, it's almost, it is midnight. Elena Shep is saying, Fifty-One Hannah Niles, I'm going to direct a butter. From my house, we overlook their parking lot. There are spots available, that's why I'm so confused why this is such a big issue. I'm there all day, every day, on the weekends, at night, in the morning. There are parking spaces, always, we can see it from our kitchen, from my master bedroom looking down on the parking lot. But as we mentioned, they are not good neighbors. We've been there for thirteen years, we had so much trash coming onto our property, we put up a fence, I had contacted them a few times. It's not just that, but it's the noise ordinance, as Braintree has a noise ordinance. They have deliveries all hours of the night, in the morning, five o'clock in the morning, I don't know if it's them emptying the dumpsters, or linen deliveries, food trucks, I don't know what it is, there's always some sort of truck slamming the dumpsters back and forth. My dog wakes up, goes nuts, I mean, it is waking us up, and it's been like that for years. And I have spoken to people over at Alliance, and that was years ago, it never ended, you know, one time, I think me and another neighbor actually drove over there to see what was making the noise and what truck it was. But again, they're getting deliveries all hours of the night, so it's not just that, they're, they're, they're not being gracious neighbors to us. And again, with those, with those trailers, and now this whole parking issue, there's always parking, every time I, we're looking out the windows, there are spots available. I don't know why this is such an issue. I, I think I even sent a video to Ms. Antucci a while ago about how loud those delivery trucks are at five o'clock in the morning. So I mean, it's, it's, it's more issues surrounding it, not just, just the parking part of it. So I just wanted to put that out there again. Thank you for your time, and I just wanted to let you know.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Kara Perkins, I'm the, I work at Alliance, I've been the activity director there for twenty-four years now. My dad's also a patient there, he's been a patient there for about three years. So speaking from a family member's perspective and a staff member's perspective, I think it's great that the neighbor is able to find spots. If she could point them out to the staff and the visitors and the volunteers, that would be super helpful, because we can't find spots. About a month ago, I had to bring a woman to her, pick up her car that was towed, because she was parked illegally, and her car had to be towed, she was, you know, in her late seventies, just visiting her husband, you know, and we, we can definitely, I'm sure it can be loud there sometimes, delivery trucks do come, we do have to feed our patients, so food trucks come, sometimes they come early, linen trucks come, so we can give them showers and things like that, so those things do happen in a nursing home. Somebody mentioned earlier, good neighbors, the term good neighbors. The town I live in, in Pembroke, we have an assisted living, and the townspeople in Pembroke like to get together and volunteer at the assisted living in Pembroke, it's called Bridges, and bring the residents that live there, you know, goodies in the holidays, and we used to have a great volunteer program with residents from Braintree, and I know I'm getting off track, but I am the activity director, so if at any time anyone wants to come on over and see what we, what we're all about at Alliance, and, you know, to end on a positive note, come on over and volunteer, we have some great residents who live there, and really, that's who it should be about, is our residents, and the fact that they sometimes can't even get visitors or volunteers, because there is no parking. Thank you.
Thank you. And I will say that I find that companies don't typically try to spend a lot of money if they don't feel that there's a need, so I can understand that there probably is a need for parking, whether it's existing, or whether it has to do with the, the renovation that's going on that was mentioned. But I do think we need to take a little bit more time to look at the existing conditions pointed out by Assistant Director Murphy, and whether there's any alternatives that can lessen the impact of that retaining wall and fence on the neighbors. But I think at this point, so that we can move on, it'd be, unless any member has any questions they want to ask tonight, I'd just be looking to, for a motion to move it to, to continue it to November twelfth.
So move.
All right, motion by Member Kent.
Second.
Second by Member Conley, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, thank you.
He might.
No, thank you. All right, so our next item is Town Council Order 2451. Now that we're into the Planning Board meeting of October 9th, I apologize for that, but if we could read the legal notice into the record, please. Legal notice?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Notice is given by the Planning Board under the provisions of Mouse General Law, Chapter 48, Sections 5 and 11, in the Braintree Zoning Ordinance, Chapter 135, Article 15, that a public hearing will be conducted on Tuesday, October 8th at 7:15 PM in the Braintree Town Hall. The Planning Board will provide a recommendation to the Town Council on Order 24051 submitted by the property owner, Joseph P. Dalton of the Joseph P. Dalton Trust. The property owner seeks to amend the zoning map by rezoning from Residence B to General Business, 1139 Washington Street, which contains two parcels, front and rear. The front containing 15,279 square feet of land has a parcel ID of 100820, and the rear containing 6,223 square feet of land has a parcel ID of 1008. Plot 20A, the total land area to be rezoned from Res B to G B is 21,502 square feet. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll turn it over to the applicant.
Hi, thank you so much. My name is Stephen Young. I'm the developer and the applicant here, and I'm representing the Elm, sorry, I'm representing Mona River LLC. So-
Sorry, did you say your name?
My name is Stephen Young.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, with a V. Quickly, 1139 1151 Washington Street comprised one piece of property that I currently have under contract known as the Dalton Water Property. 1151 is already zoned, General Business, in totals 1.35 acres. 1139 is zoned Residence B in totals .49. I'm here tonight to request a rezone of the smaller parcel, which represents 27% of the property as a whole. Neighborhood outreach, I passed out flyers to direct a butters with contact information and held a meet and greet at the golf course. There were three parties present, and we enjoyed a smaller sessions with Councillor Barica and Flaherty present. Since that meeting and an impromptu conference call session with more Jefferson Street residents, it's been made aware to me that a number of Shepherd Road residents would like the opportunity to partake as well. I would like to host another weeknight neighborhood meeting at the Muni Golf Course prior to the next step and/or Town Council hearing. Congruent use and economic development. The current industrial use of the property as a whole demonstrates a clear need for a cohesive zoning designation. Aligning both lots under General Business would create a unified approach to land use. The change would enhance economic development in the area, potentially creating much-needed housing and increasing tax revenue. Industrial existing use. The current use of the property is a water supply company for swimming pools and other commercial water needs. This use is existing non-conforming, not otherwise allowed in the district. Heavy machinery, chlorine, and pollution would be eliminated with a new use of multifamily residential, which typically carries a smaller environmental footprint compared to industrial uses. Environmental. A congruent use of the property as a whole will allow for much-needed restorative measures along the manatequod riverfront. These existing wetlands have been substantially degraded via the industrial use right up to and over the wetlands line. Three actions: A, a restoration of the wetlands; B, the establishment of a new 25-foot wetlands buffer; and C, a new stormwater control measures will all result in an enhanced protection of wetlands value in the Wetland Protection Act. The industrial use currently has no stormwater management or treatment to prevent site contaminants and pollutants from entering the river. Resource, which many homes on Shepherd Road and Jefferson Street currently enjoy. In addition to the new 25-foot buffer, the project will comply with local and state stormwater regulations, which include mitigation of peak rates of stormwater runoff. A new site plan will be required to pull uses away from the resource area and towards Washington Street, allowing for the above-mentioned restoration of the wetlands and buffer. Design. A multifamily residential design is currently underway. Design items including density, parking, number of units, materials, setbacks, height, et cetera, will be subject to the review of the ZBA, the CONCOM, the Planning Board, and Wetlands Protection Act, and so on. Again, these items are pending a successful rezone via Town Council. Traffic. Like the above item, pending a successful rezone, we will engage a traffic engineer for the project's presumed effect on traffic. Residents of Shepherd Road and Jefferson Street have already expressed concern over traffic impact. Focus will include presumed trip generations on peak commuter times via trips per hour. So in closing, I've met with Melissa and Connor many times. I've was able to meet with Councillors Barica and Flaherty multiple times. I've met with the mayor once, and I would love to just show one plan, one or two plans, real quick, to the board. My white thing is flashing.
What, the bottom one?
Yeah, just once? Okay. I've tried it a few times. Should I press and hold it or something? I did run the, it's flashing. I did run that, what's the name of the software again? Oh, here you go, Click Share. Oops, now it might be working. Yep, connecting to Beijing. Okay, here we go. Thank you.
There we go. You need the red.
Yeah, we have a paper. We have a paper. So an important note is that the majority of the Dalton Water Property is currently zoned, General Business, which would allow for a multifamily use via special permit. So that's 72% of the property as a whole is already zoned that way. So this is a, this is on the edge of-
Oh, okay.
Hi, can you help me with that? This is on-
I obviously can't.
So I click that.
Yeah, let me just do this.
Oh, okay. So this is, the Dalton Water Property, as you may or may not know, is down at the, where Washington Street and Hancock intersect by the Dunkin' Donuts there. The sort of triangular-shaped block that Dunkin' Donuts is on, that is all currently zoned, General Business.
Just go into the File Explorer.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Right here?
Yes, sir.
Double-click?
Yeah, just, yeah. And then-
Mac, I'll share?
Yep.
Melissa and I just did that. Let's try and down here.
Yeah. It's going to give me a notification up top.
Okay.
Sorry, Dan, I feel bad. No, you got it, you got it.
Did I just hear something beep?
Something's falling.
I could-
Yeah, if you have a hard copy there, we can just pass it.
Yeah, that'd be great, so-
I can't open the application because it's not responding.
The site plan.
Which color? Not the black and white.
It's like my kid's iPad. It just stops working after a certain amount of time. Okay, so that's the existing condition. So we have that in our, yeah.
Yeah, it's kind of in the quality report.
Right.
Steve's office, he's-
Oh, yes, sorry, thanks. Yeah, we have that one.
Okay. We have a, I have a, have begun work on, as I said, a multi, yeah, it's okay. So I've begun, begun work on a site plan for, again, a multifamily option, which is down the road regarding special permit and ZBA and so on and so forth. But the colors are a little off here, but the manatequod river's here. So, and this is, these are two drawings superimposed. You can see here, these are some water treatment pools back here. This is, this is, oh, thanks. So some of these are beyond, some of these are within the buffer and within the, and near the wetlands line. So this, this yellow area here is a 25-foot buffer, and the wetlands line is on the backside of that. So again, restoring all this, we're doing green space here. We're doing everything we can regarding pulling uses away from the river and towards Washington Street. So it's really a change of use for that one smaller parcel. General Business here. Mentos Landscaping is here as General Business. The Tree Restaurant is here, that's General Business. Across the street is General Business, and it's a budding, it's a budding Residence B neighborhood right here. This is, this is Jefferson Street.
So I guess my question is, I'm just going to ask now, since it's late.
Yes.
But if you're doing multifamily, can you, can you reach the same goal with Residence C instead of General Business for that extra parcel? No?
Will be a spot zone, Madam Chair. Let me go back to my seat if I miss-
Okay, yep.
Okay, oh, because it's B on the other side and then General Business.
Yeah, I think, Madam Chair, my snap recording, I clicked the zoning map. Let me just check and see.
Yeah, no, it's in there. I didn't really think about that.
Yeah, there wasn't, you know, I think the two larger Dalton pieces are currently G B, and then this is just a, you know, an extension of that zone, but contiguous with and similar to, you know, as Steve had mentioned, when we come to sort of that triangular point with Dunkin' Donuts and the tree, and we have Mentos property and the Dalton property that are both currently non-conforming in regards to General Business. They're more commercial uses. Oh, thank you, Conley. Well, that shows it much better.
Yeah, yeah, it's my only concern. I understand the multifamily, but if another big commercial or industrial use, it's allowed in General Business.
So that, so that, sorry to interrupt, the yellow highlight there, that's 1139 Washington, directly behind that, you'll see some water tanker trucks stored. That's 1139 Washington Rear. So those two parcels are two of the four parcels which are under agreement, if you will, and proposed for development.
Okay. All right, did you have anything else, or else I was going to ask for a public comment?
No, I have nothing else at all.
Okay. All right, so this is a public hearing. If there's anyone here on 1139 Washington Street, the Town Council ordered a rezone. All right, Member McConley, do you have any questions?
Are we just recommending?
Yes.
Okay. And if you were here from the beginning-
I was.
Okay. You know, I think some of our concerns are same as with ZOM, you know, what's the concept plan going to look like? Are you going to fall through in that? You know, what kind of density are we talking here?
Mm-hmm.
So that, I, well, I'm going to ask you that question. What kind of density are we talking here?
So that's underway. I should, I should, I should have prefaced this, I'm a licensed architect in the Commonwealth as well as a construction supervisor, so things like scale and density are important to me. I've met with staff many times on this, and it's important that, for many reasons, that the building fits within the neighborhood. Washington Street, as you face, as you face the site, has a pretty severe grade down towards Dunkin' Donuts and the Thayer Ice Rink, if you will. So it's about a 10 or 11-foot grade change. So on the Jefferson Street side of the site, where the yellow square is now, essentially where the number nine is from the 1139, that's about 10 feet higher from the left-hand portion of the 1151 site. So on that residential corner, the building's three stories high. It falls with, falls under current zoning regarding building height of three stories or 50 feet. As you go down the street, as you go, as you drive down the grade, it, the, for lack of a better word, underground parking, that, you're then pointing onto the site at grade, neck on the Mento landscaping side of the lot, and therefore, that exposed portion of the building becomes the three stories that I just described, but plus the additional story underneath it. So it appears as a four-story building. So the grade changes. That's where we're at now. And then, and then with the limitations of the, of the wetlands and the intent to restore them and so on and so forth, again, that's been pulling everything away from the river and pushing it towards, towards Washington Street. So that exercise right there results in X number of parking spots. So it's going to become a, if relief is going to be sought for a two-spot per unit, if relief is going to be sought for that, then, then what, at what, you know, where is that number? Does two become 1.5? Does it become one? That's where we're at now. So the density is, it's a very hot topic, and it's the first question after traffic from a butters so far, and that's, that's important. So I think those two are related to. We do plan on engaging a traffic engineer pending a successful rezone at that point. Right now, the, a congruent zoning on both, on all four, you know, on both addresses would, would result in a better opportunity for, for restoring the riverfront as a whole and affecting the streetscape in a positive way. So I should mention also, in addition to being three stories high at that corner, the second, the third story rather, is significantly recessed. So the goal was for the building to appear as a two-story building, and the third story is recessed substantially off of, off of Washington Street. I'm hesitant to go into too many design issues because it'll be a moot point if we don't get the rezone, but I'm certainly not hiding anything.
Yeah, no, no, it sounds thoughtful. Actions speak louder than words.
Yes.
You know, what you probably heard from the residents tonight was all-
Yeah.
Same. They may not know the right terms. I may not know the right terms, but-
They really want a master plan, is what I-
Well, you know, density-
Yep.
Having it look good, like you said.
Yep.
Concealing it a little bit.
Mm-hmm.
Appropriate parking, blah, blah, blah. Those are all-
Yeah, yeah.
Important.
You're right. Asetics and fitting in-
So we'll wait on that.
I appreciate that.
Yeah, okay.
I assure you, I'm addressing it.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Member Kent?
Ah, no questions.
Member Conley?
No questions, thank you.
All right. Sorry, who is this?
Quickly, I did prepare a report. I want to, I want to commend Steve. I've been working with him for quite some time now, a couple months, if not a little bit longer. And I would describe him as responsive and responsible. He, you know, the impression I got is he's an architect, he's putting his name on this building, and he's looking to make a long-term investment for himself and his holdings. And looking at this property and understanding this property, the items that we've discussed and his willingness to really not fully take advantage of, quote, redevelopment, and this is where I am, and this is where I'm going to stay in my proximity to the resource areas, he's really looked at it and really begun to pull away, pull away, pull away. And I think the opportunity to clean this place up and introduce a use that is a little bit more cohesive to the single-family neighborhood and some of the businesses in that area, removing truck traffic is one of the items I think is really going to be beneficial. This, this rezone really, to me, lends more to the environmental benefits to the public than, than some of the other ones that we've looked at more- Um, but no, I, I do think, um, again, kind of just looking at that area, looking at the square, looking at where some of our MBTA zones are and really trying to, um, support and anchor South Braintree Square, this, this adds to that as well.
One final comment. Brad McKen- McKenzie is here tonight from McKenzie Engineering. He's, he's been helping me with the rest, restoration, restoration plan of the wetlands and, and they have very similar projects in this space, including many projects in Braintree. So Brad's here if you have any civil engineering or wetlands regarding at, at this time of night.
I don't, any other members have any questions?
Just a question. Where does this sit, uh, with respect to the development on Hancock Street?
Um...
Development on Hancock Street?
Is that highlighted parcel right there?
Yeah, okay, okay. Okay, that's, that's fine.
Unless anybody has any further questions, I guess we'd be looking for a motion on the... Oh, yes, just come up to the microphone, name and address, please.
Evening, morning.
Hi, Steve Conley. I live in 79 Shepherd Road. I'm a director butter. Uh, I just have a question on the building size and the height. You said four, four stories? Would there be lighting in there?
So, sorry, just to answer the question.
Oh, can you hear me?
I'll give the applicant a, a chance to come up also, but it is, right now it's a zoning change proposal, so there's not an application in front of us with the building specifics. They are working on the concept.
The buffer, maybe conservation was the buffer. This is a 25-foot buffer in here? I always understood it was 75 to 100-foot buffer.
The 25 is under our local wetlands bylaw and the state statute's 100-foot buffer zone. So you can work in the, in the, between the 100 and 25.
So would the parking lot be in the buffer zone?
The existing parking lot?
No, the, well, the proposed parking lot.
We don't have that, that level of plan yet that we're looking at.
Right, so if the zoning does go through, they'll have to file an application with the planning board and with Conservation Commission, and Conservation Commission will take a look at the sighting of the parking lot and the building with respect to the conservation and wetland aspects, and then we'll be looking at more or less the rest of the site.
Okay. Guess that's it, thanks.
All right, thank you. All right, so that, we're looking for a motion on the recommendation in front of us.
Close the public hearing.
Oh, yeah, I guess we should. Do a motion to, do we close first or do we vote first? I keep forgetting.
Doesn't matter.
All right, we'll, all right, we'll do a motion to close. All right, who has a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Motion by Member Kent, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Member Kent, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. All right, good luck with the next step. Thank you. Oh, yeah, thank you. And now we'll do a motion to close tonight's hearing.
So moved.
Motion by Member Conley, do we have a second?
Can't wait.
Second by Member Kent, all those in favor?
Aye.